I have Counselor Capone.
Here.
I have Counselor De La Sola.
Here.
I have Counselor Florio.
Yeah.
I have Counselie Hillen.
Here.
I have Counselor Napolitano.
Here.
And I have Counselor Maccasie.
Yeah.
We have six members present, we do have a quarter.
Thank you, all stand, salute the flag, please.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited, and just as for all.
Before we start our meeting, I have three colleagues who cannot make it tonight. Counselor Matusky is home with his mother who's not feeling well. Counselor McKinnon has a prime engagement, and Counselor De Perro is not feeling well.
All right, we have order of by Counselor De La Sola as president, in order to amend the City of Everett administrative code.
Counselor De Florio.
Does the administration have a PowerPoint for us?
Yes, they do, they have a presentation for us.
All right, so we inviting them up?
Yes, all the favor?
Aye.
All the opposed, the ayes have it?
Excuse me, is this administrative code we went over all last year?
Changed, yeah, this one.
We went through the changes last year, didn't we?
No.
These are new changes from last year's changes?
Yep.
I have them here.
Right there, in the middle.
Yeah, this, this is no good?
No.
Just please.
Yeah.
Just please state your name and department you're with, please. Counselor Simon Elliott is here.
Mike.
Good evening, Colleen Mahias, City Solicitor.
That's the presentation tonight.
Attorney General, Chief of Staff, Maria.
Matt Latanzi, Assistant City Solicitor.
Yes, you could start with your presentation.
All righty, so just for the counselors as well, what you have in front of you is a printout of all of these slides, and then we also have the administrative code in its entirety. This presentation is going over just the changes to the administrative code, and I break it down into three large sections. Just, section two is a general provision section, section three deals with multi-member bodies, and section four is the executive administration. So within the section two, general provisions, this is an overview, we'll be dealing first with the method of appointment, eligibility of service, and oaths of office. Then we're going to move on to method of removal, and then a new subsection that has been added. For section two, general approvals, method of appointment, eligibility of service, oaths of office. Section two, subsection A, 3B, just so everyone knows as well, the red portions are the ones that are added, and anything struck has been proposed to be deleted. So the added language is in red as you see here, so it's reading, unless specified by local or state law to the contrary, or specifically required by the code, all members shall be over the age of eighteen and shall be a resident of Massachusetts with residency or property ownership within the City of Everett to be eligible to serve on multiple member bodies. Section two, A, 3D reads, all appointees shall take an oath of office administered by the city clerk or assistant city clerk within thirty days of their final appointment. Section two, general provisions, method of removal. Section two, A, 4A reads, members of multiple member bodies shall be relieved of their appointment and removed from office in the event of one or the more, one or more of the following takes place, failure to attend two consecutive regularly scheduled meetings without approval of the chairman, failure to attend four regularly scheduled meetings in a one-year period notwithstanding approval from the chairman, chairperson, sorry. Section two, A, 4B, within that, section A, 4A, 4 has been stricken, and A, 4B has been added in its place. It reads, the mayor may request the resignation of any person serving on a multiple member board. If the board member does not accept the mayor's request for resignation, the mayor may petition the city council for the members' removal. Such removal would require a majority vote by the city council members.
If I may, I don't want to interrupt you, but is that last section new?
That last section is, it's new, it's rewritten from a previous, as it states, A, 4A, 4. You'll probably notice it in the entirety of the admin code, that document. It used to be one of four automatic way, automatic removals, now it is a petition by the mayor, and then the mayor will petition to you if they do not accept the resignation.
The reason why I ask is, we received a red line copy a couple of weeks back, maybe about four or five weeks ago, and there's language on this one that's, that's new, so that might have been amended from our other copy.
So, anything that's in front of you from a few weeks ago, it, we have had some changes to that, so I would, I would refer to the copy given to you guys today. That's the most up to date, and that's the one that'll follow with this PowerPoint presentation.
Thank you, sorry for interrupting you, thank you.
Not a problem. So there's been a new subsection added to the general provisions, that is now subsection two, A, 7. It reads, it's for minutes in audio recordings, reads, every board, commission, and board of trustees shall file with the city clerk approved minutes and audiotaped recordings of their meetings within seven days of the date of approval of the minutes of such meeting. This has been in ordinances before, we're now just incorporating it, incorporating it into the admin code. So now we're going to move on, section three deals with multiple member bodies, so this is an overview. The first that we're going to deal with is the Board of Trust, Library Trustees, that is over four slides, so hang on tight. Then we have a name change to one of the departments, we have changes to the appointment composition and terms of office, and this is broken into three subsections of associate members, number of members slash necessary members, then a miscellaneous section, and a fourth section is powers and duties. So first, multiple member bodies, Board of Library Trustees, this is the first of four slides. Section three, I, Board of Library Trustees is stricken in its entirety and replaced with the following. One, powers and duties, A, in accordance with the will of Frederick E. Parlin and the subsequent trust created under the will, known as the Frederick E. Parlin Memorial Library Fund, the Board of Trustees of the Frederick E. Parlin Memorial Library shall, quote, have charge and management of the Frederick E. Parlin Memorial Library Fund, and shall invest the principal thereof in such bonds and notes other than mortgage notes as may be permitted by law for the investment of the saving bank, saving bank of Massachusetts, and that all bonds shall be registered, at least as to the principal thereof in the name of, and all notes shall be made payable to the order of the City of Everett Frederick E. Parlin Memorial Library Fund, and shall be sold and transferred only with the written consent of the majority of the members of said Board of Trustees. Number two, quote, the income from said fund shall be expended by the Board of Trustees for the purchase of furniture, equipment other than supplies, and books for said library, also for the care of the library grounds, and for the enlargement or addition to the library building whenever the same shall be necessary, but for no other purposes. B, under powers and duties, the Board of Trustees shall exercise these aforementioned powers and duties in relation to the main branch of the Frederick E. Parlin Memorial Library, the Schuylt Library Branch, and any other branches which may be opened in the future. Two, appointment, composition, term of office. There shall be a Board of Trustees consisting of thirteen persons to be appointed by the mayor, subject to confirmation by the city council, all of whom shall be appointed for a three-year term. In accordance with the will of Frederick E. Parlin, the treasurer of the Board shall be the city treasurer of the City of Everett. The commission shall annually elect a chairperson and secretary, who shall serve at the pleasure of the commission. This next slide is probably going to be difficult to read, much like a lot of these slides. This is the will of Frederick E. Parlin, in which he describes how he wants the Board of Library Trustees and his trust to be taken care of. This next slide is a zoomed-in version of the relevant sections of that, if the council wants to look at that. Most of that language is quoted in that last slide, if you guys want time to look through it.
Excuse me, but this, just a quick on this, this hasn't changed in the last hundred years, right?
The will?
These two pages, yeah.
Yeah, no, it'd be tough. So just to clear up some confusion, I added a fourth page to this, and this pertains to the MGLs, which apply and do not apply to libraries owned by cities. Section ten, or MGLA, chapter eighty-seven, section ten and eleven do not apply to the Frederick E. Parlin Library, nor the Schuylt Library. Section ten reads, in pertinent part, a town which raises or appropriates money for the support of a free library, or free public library in reading room, owned by the town, shall, unless the same has been acquired entirely or in part through some gift or bequest which contains other conditions or provisions for the election of its trustees, or for its care and management, which have been accepted by the town, elect by ballot a Board of Trustees consisting of any number of persons, male or female, divisible by three, which the town determines to elect. Section eleven reads, in pertinent part, the Board shall have the custody and management of the library and reading room, and of all property owned by the town relating thereto. All money raised or appropriated by the town for its support and maintenance shall be expended by the Board, and all money or property which the town may receive by gift or bequest for said library and reading room shall be administered by the Board in accordance with the provisions of such gift or request. MGLA eighty-seven, section twenty-one states, sections ten to twelve inclusive, and sections sixteen to eighteen, which have since been repealed, inclusive, shall not apply to cities. Moving on now from the library to multiple member bodies, there's been a name change in one of the commissions. The cultural council, or, I'm sorry, the cultural commission shall be renamed the Cultural Council. Still in section three, multiple member bodies, we're now dealing with appointment, composition, terms of office, and associate members. So, the Conservation Commission, the Planning Board, and the Zoning Board of Appeals will have the following language added. Quote, associate members may be selected in the same manner. Associate members can participate as a voting member in the absence, in the event of an absence, inability to act, conflict, or vacancy of a member. Again, dealing with appointment, composition, term of office, this time now focusing on the number of members or necessary members on the bodies. The Historical Commission decreased their maximum membership from seven to five members. The Youth Commission modified their membership from, quote, not less than three, not more than seven members, to having five members. The Cultural Council modified their membership from, quote, at least five, but no more than twenty-two members, to seven members. They also modified their maximum service for a member from six years to six consecutive years, consecutive has been added. Cultural Council also added language stating, quote, members must remain off the council for one-year intervals before serving additional terms. Each council must annually elect a chair, secretary, and treasurer. The terms of individual council members should be staggered. The School Finance Commission decreased their membership from thirteen members to twelve members, and they removed the president of the Everett Teachers Association from those required members. Still on appointment, composition, terms of office, this is just miscellaneous stuff. The Disability Commission added, quote, a person who, end quote, at the beginning of each of the three definitions for persons with a handicap. The School Finance Review Commission added that the city clerk shall serve as the clerk of the commission, or he shall, shall appoint a designee, recording commission minutes, and other pertinent information. The Parks Commission added, quote, a commissioner may be removed by a two-thirds, by two, by a vote of two-thirds of the voters of a town, or a vote of two-thirds of all members of a city council, at the request of the mayor. Moving now to powers and duties of section three, multiple member bodies. The Historical Commission added language, in accordance with MGL forty, section eight D, the Historical Commission shall. The Youth Commission added, quote, in accordance with MGL chapter forty, section eight E, the Youth Commission shall. The Traffic Commission added, the rental of off-street spaces that are municipally owned or operated, is the added language. Moving now to section four, this deals with the executive administration, this is just an overview of it. First is the DPW reorganization. First, it is renamed offices, there were quite a bit, and then the duty and responsibility modifications, which span over five slides. Then we're going to deal with organizational assessment, which is a new office created. Appointments, duties, and responsibilities is next, and then last is the Code Enforcement Task Force. So first, the DPW reorganization, this is the renamed offices. The Office of the Executive Director of Public Works shall be renamed Office of Executive Director of Public Works and Engineering. Fleet Management shall be renamed Fleet Division. The Division of Municipal Infrastructure shall be renamed Highway Division. The Division of Parks and Cemeteries shall be renamed Division of Parks, Cemeteries, and Sanitation. Office of Facilities Maintenance shall be renamed Facilities Maintenance Division. Division of City Engineering shall be renamed City Engineering Division. The Office of Stormwater Management, which is an office of the Division of Water and Sewer, has been removed. DPW reorganization, duty and responsibility modifications, again, this spans over five slides. So first, dealing with the Office of the Executive Director of Public Works and Engineering. The director has had one power removed, and it is to exercise supervision and control of the streets, sidewalks, sanitary sewers, storm drains, refuse disposal, and the water distribution system of the City of Everett. The business manager has had three powers removed, and those are, manage the operations of the city's solid waste and recycling functions, and internal management of the department, and managing the rentals of Edward G. Connolly Center and the Samuel Gentile Recreation Center. Duty and Responsibility Modification, slide two out of five. The Division of Parks, Cemeteries, and Sanitation, the section is stricken in its entirety and replaced with the following. A, the superintendent of Parks, Cemeteries, and Sanitation shall be appointed by the mayor to a term not to exceed three years. B, the superintendent of Parks, Cemeteries, and Sanitation shall, under the supervision of the Office of the Executive Director of Public Works, one, supervise the construction, maintenance, upkeep, and improvements to all municipally-owned open space, and ensure that all open space is available and maintained for the benefit of all Everett residents. Two, manage rental of all open space available for rent by the public at large, including all fields and parks. Such management shall consist of scheduling compliance with the city policy and coordination of city personnel for appropriate staffing. Three, maintain all aspects of Glenwood Cemetery and provide all services necessary to ensure the efficient and respectful interment of the deceased. Manage creation of new plots, landscaping, and seasonal access and cleanup. Four, manage the operations of city's solid waste and recycling function. Monitor refuse and recycling management facility performance for regulatory compliance. Slide three out of five with duty and responsibility modifications of the DPW. Facilities Maintenance Division now reads as follows, A, Superintendent of Facilities Maintenance, duties and responsibilities. The Superintendent of Facilities Maintenance shall be appointed by the mayor to a term not to exceed three years. The Superintendent of Facilities Maintenance shall be under the supervision of the Executive Director of Public Works. Shall, one, maintain and organize upkeep and improvements to all municipally-owned buildings and facilities, including cleaning and renovation. Makes recommendations for capital improvements to municipally-owned buildings. Ensures that all buildings externally and internally are safe for employees and the public at large. Two, manage rental of all municipal buildings available for rent by the public at large, including the Edward G. Connolly Center and the Samuel Gentile Recreation Center. Such management shall consist of scheduling compliance, compliance with city policy and coordination of city personnel for appropriate staffing. Slide four out of five, Division of Water and Sewer, added, the Superintendent of the Division of Water and Sewer shall be under the supervision of the Executive Director of Public Works. They also added the language and business to, to their duty of maintaining accurate records and billing systems for the use of water and sewer resources. The last one for the duty and responsibility modification, slide five out of five, Division of City Engineering. Language added, quote, or have an equivalent of years of experience in civil engineering to the duties of the civil engineer. Deleted, quote, mayor, the city council, by any committee thereof, or by any administrative board or officer having the same in charge, and replaced it with, quote, department, end quote, for whom may require the city engineer to perform certain tasks. Deleted, quote, and all information of this character furnished to owners of estates or persons representing them, or those intending to build, shall be without charge, end quote, from what the city engineer must furnish to all applicants. Deleted, quote, examine carefully all the bridges within the city limits annually or oftener, if required to do so by the mayor, and shall make a report to the mayor respecting their condition as to safety, need, or renewal, or repairs. Moving now to a new section, a new office created, or new department created, Organizational Assessment, it's found in section four, subsection O. The following is the proposed language for this position. One, the Director of Organizational Assessment, appointment, A, the Director of Organizational Assessment shall be appointed by the mayor to up to a term not to exceed three years. The Director of Organizational Assessment shall oversee and administer all aspects of the Department of Organizational Assessment, and take all measures necessary and prudent to ensure prompt delivery of services. Two, duties and responsibilities, A, the Office of Organizational Assessment shall, one, take an, take an analysis of the City of Everett's organizational structure, work distribution, work processes, and work relationships. Shall make recommendations that may include organizational restructure, job and work redesign, and/or streamlined, streamlined job responsibilities. Two, you shall provide performance management and consulting to a number of staff and departments to both ensure that their workplace performance best supports the needs of the City of Everett, and to achieve higher levels of performance and productivity. Three, to shape the future of the municipal and civil employees of the City of Everett through an active employee engagement strategic plan, through, through evaluation and assessment, and through providing professional development. It shall be the responsibility of the Office of Organizational Assessment to reinvent their approach for achieving their goals by continuously reinventing strategies in order to best embody the values of the City of Everett. Moving on now to appointments, duties, and responsibilities changes within the executive administration. A new role has been added, or more codified, to the Office of the City Solicitor. The City Solicitor is the risk manager. That means is, the City Solicitor shall administer all matters involving property and casualty insurance, including identifying, measuring, and managing insurable or hazardous risks, developing reports and plans, analyzing risk/insurance problems, and/or overseeing the implementation of the risk solutions that help optimize operations of the city. Two, the City Solicitor shall mitigate the city's exposure to risk by formulating, developing, and coordinating all claims related, all claims-related activities, as well as resolving claims at the least possible cost through various risk transfer techniques. The City Solicitor shall work directly with insurance carriers to ensure the proper and efficient handling of claims, gathering data on claims for both record-keeping and loss forecasting purposes, and estimating the financial value of claims. Next, the appointment of the Director of the Departments of Libraries has been modified. The Director of Libraries shall be appointed by the mayor to a term not to exceed three years. The language stricken is in accordance with applicable Massachusetts law, which, as I covered earlier, the Massachusetts law does not actually apply to city-owned or, to city-owned libraries, such as the one, the ones that we have. I believe this is the last slide, Code Enforcement Task Force. The Code Enforcement Task Force has added a tenth required member. This required member is the superintendent of schools, or his designee, and that is the end.
I have a small list of counselors to talk, Counselor Napolitano will be first, and Counselor Florio is second.
Good evening, good evening, I have a few questions here. First of all, right out of the gate, why the removal of residents of Everett as a prerequisite to being nominated to these, these committees? It seems like it is expanded out to property owners who may know, who don't live in the city, who really don't have the same vested interests as your, as your average, average resident. And beyond that, there is a little bit of information here with resident property ownership in the city. I mean, that's almost to say that people who live here that don't own property don't have a, wouldn't have a valid concern what's going on in the community. I just want some clarification on that.
It's, it could be either a resident, a resident tenant, a resident property owner, or a property owner. Sometimes we have a hard time attracting people to serve on boards, so to expand it to somebody who actually owns property in the City of Everett, we thought would be helpful.
How is all?
Counsel, excuse me, can you move your mic up, they can't hear you at all.
Sure.
Thank you.
So how, how does an opening like this get advertised so your average resident would be aware that there is an opening?
Oh, I don't know if the city clerk is here, but he, he entered into an agreement with a, a software company, and it's streamlining all boards and commissions, city council, and we've been in the process of training for months, and he had entered all the boards and commissions in, in that database with their, their term expiration dates, and so then it pops up that there's a vacancy, and through that website, we can, software, excuse me, we can advertise the vacancy.
insurance, including identifying, measuring, and managing insurable or hazardous risks, developing reports and plans, analyzing risk/insurance problems, and/or overseeing the implementation of the risk solutions that help optimize operations of the city. 2. The City Solicitor shall mitigate the city's exposure to risk by formulating, developing, and coordinating all claims-related activities, as well as resolving claims at the least possible cost through various risk transfer techniques. The City Solicitor shall work directly with insurance carriers to ensure the proper and efficient handling of claims, gathering data on claims for both record-keeping and loss forecasting purposes, and estimating the financial value of claims. Next, the Appointment of the Director of the Departments of Libraries has been modified. The Director of Libraries shall be appointed by the mayor to a term not to exceed three years. The language stricken is in accordance with applicable Massachusetts law, which, as I covered earlier, the Massachusetts law does not actually apply to city-owned libraries such as the ones that we have. I believe this is the last slide. Code Enforcement Task Force. The Code Enforcement Task Force has added a 10th required member. This required member is the Superintendent of Schools or his designee. And that is the end.
I have a small list of Councilors to talk, Councilor Polatino will be first, and Councilor Florio is second.
Good evening. Good evening. I have a few questions here. First of all, right out of the gate, why the removal of residents of Everett as a prerequisite to being nominated to these committees? It seems like it is expanded out to property owners who may know, who don't live in the city, who really don't have the same vested interests as your average resident. And beyond that, there is a little bit of information here with resident property ownership in the city. I mean, that's almost to say that people who live here that don't own property don't have a, wouldn't have a valid concern what's going on in the community. I just want some clarification on that.
It could be either a resident, a resident tenant, a resident property owner, or a property owner. Sometimes we have a hard time attracting people to serve on boards, so to expand it to somebody who actually owns property in the City of Everett, we thought would be helpful.
How is all?
Counselor, excuse me. Can you move your mic up? They can't hear you at all. Sure. Thank you.
So how does an opening like this get advertised so your average resident would be aware that there is an opening?
Oh, I don't know if the city clerk is here, but he entered into an agreement with a software company, and it's streamlining all boards and commissions, city council. We've been in the process of training for months, and he had entered all the boards and commissions in that database with their term expiration dates, and so then it pops up that there's a vacancy, and through that website, we can, software, excuse me, we can advertise the vacancies. And we've done that so far, I think with the Elections Commission.
So if you don't know, to look at those websites.
I think it may have been advertised on the city website.
All right, well, I'm looking for a specific, I am looking for a specific answer. How does your average resident know that there's an opening on one of these committees to be able to apply? Is it advertised in the newspapers? Is it on the city website? Do they have to have some in on how to get the information?
Counselor, excuse me, I cut in from the chair. I'd like to invite the mayor up and the city clerk to answer that question, if that's all right with you.
Yeah, I'm just, it's a simple, it's a simple question. I'm just, the reason why it's such a complicated answer.
Well, they would know the answer.
So the, as we all know, we're, none of us are novices here in the city, for the last hundred years, people would express interest on any one of the boards to the mayor's office. And I think every resident, as we all know, we've been running for office for many years, any resident who would like to serve on a board would always send a resume to the mayor's office, which many residents do. So I think people, in general, understand that there are boards and commissions, and they know that the process would be to submit a resume to the City of Everett, to the mayor's office. A lot of people send it to HR. The thing now is, in our bylaws, you can be on a board and not even live in Everett. We have members who are on boards who live in New Hampshire, who don't even own property in the city, who've moved out of the city and serve on boards, and I can't even replace them because I can't get anyone to apply to them. So I would, I'd take resumes at any time. Not to say that every resume I'm going to take from someone, that I'm going to offer them a position, but that's, you know, we're just trying to clean up the language. The clerk is actually going to want a full job, finding a software and make it easy because there are a lot of positions. Sometimes there are a lot of people who, positions have expired. Mayor Hamlin, you probably have dealt with some of that, and, you know, you're trying to find someone to replace them, you can't find someone to replace them, so you give them 30, 60, 90 day reappointments. I have board members on boards that have holdovers from Dave Ragucci, holdovers from John Hamlin. I haven't replaced, because I can't get anyone who, I actually pay, I'm paying, the library board of trustees never got paid, so we, I've decided to pay them. There are a lot of board members that, you know, back, you know, maybe 30, 40 years ago, $1,200 was a good pay for a board that was paid, actually, it was always the rule of thumb that you give them enough money to pay their taxes, I think. It was kind of like the enticing thing. As we know, that has changed, but to get someone to donate and volunteer their time to come and then be susceptible to lawsuits, right? You have members of the planning board, ZBA, who can be sued on decisions, so it's hard to get some people to serve. So if you know anyone who wants to serve on any commission, if anyone in this audience, we'd be glad to take their resume, give them an interview, talk to them. I want to make sure that people on these boards and commissions have a good rapport with people and can deal with people in a positive manner. I just want to make sure that people on the boards today live in Everett, and why we say own property, we figured that someone like, someone who's lived in Everett their whole lives, owned a home, and had to move out, but still owns that property, still has a care and interest to make sure the value of their property maintains, you know, maintains its value. So that's why we put that in there.
Well, again, I guess the answer, the question I'm actually asking, and I do appreciate the information, it's still not what I'm asking, and that is that...
I'm sorry, what were you asking?
Well, when a position comes open...
Yeah.
Or if somebody's coming up at the end of their term...
Right.
How was that position advertised so qualified representatives, people in the city can apply for that? I'm really not talking about the random resumes section.
I used to, I used to put ads in the paper to ask for people to submit resumes. That didn't really work out too well. Counsel, yeah, I keep calling Counselor Canelo, but city clerk Canelo has now engaged in a software company that will let us know when people are expiring and automatically would post that position, and that will be attached to our city website...
Correct.
...on our Facebook pages. And since we're at the social media age, I think we're going to just try to keep it at a low cost and just leave it on the internet, on those, on our city webpage, and then I'm sure as many of you here who have social media will take that and also share it in our pages to get, to get, I don't know if it's on Twitter, but to be as inclusive as possible.
Mm-hmm.
And it gives us a 90-day notice when someone's expiring.
All right, that's what I was trying, is there a process?
Yes.
There is, there is a process.
Oh, there's a software system in place.
Okay.
And I want to thank the city clerk for getting that.
And, you know, the next thing I want to ask about is regarding the mayor's ability to request a resignation of any board. Now, is there, is it due to due cause or just at random?
It would be due to due cause, I would assume, yeah.
All right, I'd like to see that language in here. It's not in here. The way it's written right now is that...
Oh, we wouldn't randomly ask for someone's resignation.
And I wouldn't, and I'm not suggesting that you would personally do that. I'm just saying is that without the language specifying that there is, that there needs to be grounds, someone else could just arbitrarily let somebody go because they don't like them for whatever reason. And it doesn't state that, and that's all I'm asking is...
Well, I wouldn't only put someone on a board that I didn't like.
No, no, but that's not it. But as you know, once you appoint somebody, if something else goes wrong, or you find something else about the person's qualifications, you know, that would be grounds.
Well, we'd have due cause to remove them.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I think there should be some language...
We still have due cause to remove someone, we just would come before the city council.
Right. What my point is that right now, the way it's written is, you don't even need due cause. That's my concern.
Yeah, sure.
There's, if you, the section before that establishes what the cause would be. Section A. Method of removal.
What's the subsection?
A, 4A.
Okay. Yep, I got it. That's right.
So the first part of it establishes the just, the cause. If you, I think there are four, there are two that are being amended, but there is a total of four. If you look in your, yep, I'm in code. And so there's a second section that would be an option that the mayor could ask for. The mayor can ask for a resignation with or without this language. It doesn't need to be in there. But we figured that we would put it in there and then tie it along with, if the person doesn't agree to resign, then he can ask for their removal with your approval, with the majority vote.
All right, I see Section B. I see the method of removal. Okay, so you're saying is that the items in Section A...
Would be cause.
Would be the cause that establishes on Section B. All right, that's fine. All right. Next question I have is regarding the selection of board. What's the current method of selecting the board of trustees?
Same as every other board. They're approved by you.
So they're all appointed by the mayor, I've appointed them all, and they've been approved by you.
Okay. So why the change?
The change is in their powers and duties because the will of Mr. Parlin spelled out exactly what their duty should be, and the duties that were in there previously have been repealed by state law. It's nondiscretionary, and Section 21 of Chapter 78 says that those Sections 10, 11, 12, 16, and 18 shall not apply to cities.
So, so for that reason, it says it doesn't apply to cities.
Yeah.
That kind of suits making a change.
Where we're moving those powers and duties, yeah.
All right. Just the last question I have, and I'll give the floor to my colleagues. There was another section that had, that associate members could step in?
Yes.
Okay. How many associate members are on each board?
I think the zoning board actually, I think you've already voted to change the zoning board, and I think they have, it's two, three? It's three associate members, so they're alternates, basically.
But the union attendants at each meeting, so they're...
They go to every meeting.
...with the issue at hand, so there's less of a delay if someone cannot make the follow-up meeting on an issue that you still could have a call.
And that's common in lots of cities and towns, associate or alternate members are called.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor DeFlorio, and then Counselor McLaughlin after that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Most of my questions have been answered, but on the treasurer, for the library trustee, does the trustee have a treasure right now on your own? Because now it says that everything's going to go through our treasure, right?
The will...
Mr. President, if I could, I'm sorry to interrupt. Because of my conflict with library trustees, I would ask if we could, if we could treat this document like we do with the budget, and start at the very beginning and go page by page, and that way when we get to that section, I could step out. Otherwise, I might be bouncing back and forth quite a bit tonight. I think it would make it easier for everyone to follow as well. So if the council wants to finish her question, that's fine, and then however the body wants to handle it, I just think we're going to be bouncing around this document from this page to that page...
Correct.
...because people might have different questions. So once the council is done with her questions, if we could go to the beginning of the document...
Beginning of the document.
...and go page by page, and then that way we could all...
We get to your section, you could step out.
Exactly.
Well, that's what I had here, but unfortunately, that's my next question because the other council already reached questions, so...
You want to finish your questions, and then we'll start from the beginning?
What?
You want to step out, Counselor?
No, I can, I can hold my question, and if you want to go page by page, is what I'm saying.
All right.
That's fine with me. But I only went to that question because the council hit on other questions that I had on the other pages.
Mr. President, make a motion that we...
So I didn't realize we were doing page by page because the prior council didn't, so...
Correct.
We can do that now, that's not a problem.
All right. We'll start from the beginning then.
Yep.
So if any councilors that have any name, already raised their hand for a question, if it's something to do with that, we could hold off to the end. Counselor Florio, did you have anything from the beginning, or do you want to...
No, my questions have been answered from the pages at the beginning, so you can call on somebody else.
Okay, so from the beginning, we'll go with Counselor McLaughlin?
So, Mr. Chairman, through you two are invited guests. I'm just wondering, so the crossed-out part is what's currently there in your proposal to either eliminate or change what's currently there? Is that why it's crossed out?
Yeah, the crossed-out sections would be, the parts that would be deleted, and the, your red wording would be what would be proposed to be added.
But it's not currently in the document now? It's being proposed to be added, is that...
The red language, yes.
Okay. So I apologize. So we can just go page by page, sorry, Mr. President?
That's what we're going to do now.
Okay, perfect.
So we'll start at page one, if that's what everybody wants to do?
Does anybody have?
We have any questions on page one? We'll do it just like the budget. Counselor Capone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to point out that, from the copy, and I had mentioned it earlier when Attorney Latanzi was speaking, I think that there may be, in a couple of sections, there might be some changes with the document we were given this evening versus the one we got a month ago, maybe? About a month ago, maybe?
Yeah, you have it now.
Okay. So it looks like there's some additional language on the bottom. I don't have a problem with it, I just want to make sure that I'm keeping everything square. All right, thank you.
Counselor Hamlin.
Just so we know that where we are, I'd like to somehow understand what page everybody is on.
We're on this one, Counselor.
No, is that page? Are we on this? No, that's the presentation.
We're on the administration code.
Right here. How did we get this?
This is, this is the code. This is just a slideshow of the presentation.
Questions on the slideshow?
Oh, yeah, but then they also correspond...
There's 60 pages.
See how they correspond like that?
Okay.
So this here matches into that.
All right, thank you.
Okay, no questions on page one? Go to page two. Any questions on page two? I'll give you a few seconds. No question, Counselor McLaughlin?
Assistant President, just to go back to what Counselor Polatino was touching on, and the mayor kindly answered it, but, so, Mr. Mayor, it's not about you appointing somebody or you want to remove somebody. If at some point you appoint somebody and you are no longer the mayor, they can come in and, without clarification of this language, could remove those members at will.
Right.
Without having the language in there for due cause, does that concern the city?
They would finish out their term.
So they can't be removed during, in the middle of their term? So if, you know what I mean, if they have a three-year term and they have a year left in their term and you were to leave...
Well, it was always, it was always kind of common practice that when a new mayor came in, that if the mayor had asked a member of a board to resign or send in, you know, pass their resignation in, they would automatically. I think only a couple of times in history that didn't happen. I think it might have happened under Mayor Hamlin's administration, I believe, or maybe Mayor Ragucci's administration, but, you know, a new mayor coming in would have to have some cause, I would believe, due to what it says in the admin code.
I think this language is just vague on that, and it's, and again, it's not about your ability to remove somebody that you deem, but it's about if you move on, if you move on and a new mayor comes in.
The way it's written now is that the mayor would come before you and say, I would like this person removed from this board, and put you in a position, you know, I think, it's actually put in the city council in a predicament at all times, and we would come in and say, we want to get rid of this person, and then have to give you the reasons, and then you'd have to make that vote. Now, I was just trying to save you that burden. You know, you approve the appointment from the mayor, it's almost like, why wouldn't you, why would you want to have to now have me bring someone before you and then have you have to make that vote to, to remove them and cause yourselves a political headache?
And I understand, looking at it from that perspective, but if it is our confirmation to your appointment, then should it not be part of our involvement to remove that person? If we're giving them our stamp of approval or our vote of confidence in their ability to serve on this board or commission, and you're going to remove them for whatever you deem cause necessary, should we not have them back before to be...
I served, I served 14 years prior to mayor on the city council. I don't think I ever opposed one, one person that any mayor brought before me.
No, and I haven't, I haven't, I haven't either, but what I'm saying is, I'm sure you have, or maybe you did deal with it under Mayor Hamlin, but, and I haven't dealt with it under your administration, but at that point of removing somebody, it's not about getting somebody onto the board, it's about what happens on the reverse side.
We just want to remove people with, you know, we will, we would state, like as the admin code says, we would have due process, due cause to remove that person. And it states it in there that we would, we're not removing anybody because of, you know, we don't like the way they look.
Yeah, no, and...
More their behavior at their meetings, being irate, or speaking down to people, or yelling at people.
No, and I have full confidence that you're not, and, you know...
It'd be more of those reasons.
But it's about what happens if you were to move on, and then these appointments now become...
Well, we...
...optionable to the next administration that comes in without having strict due cause? I'm just looking at that as...
Well, so you can strike the due cause, and then, you know, then that new mayor would be able to just ask, would just ask him for their resignation. But we thought, as Counselor Polatino alluded to, he'd rather see the due cause in there, so we can't have both, unfortunately.
Yep, I understand.
So...
Okay. I'll leave it at that, at that point.
Thank you.
No problem.
Okay, no questions on two? We'll go to page three, please. No questions on three? We'll go to page four. Four and five, there are no changes. Six and seven is no changes. Still look through it, but if you have a question? Eight and nine is also the same, no changes. On page 10, there's a change. Counselor Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to our guests. So we see the associate members, I understand the purpose of it. Does every body have the same number of alternates, or are they different for different bodies?
It'll just be the zoning board, the conservation commission, and the planning board, and yes, they'd all have three.
Three, okay. Thank you.
Go to page 11, there's no changes on 11. No questions, there are changes on 12. Go to page 13. Any questions on 13? There's no questions. Page 14? This is what the, thank you, Counselor. Any questions on 14? Page 15? There's quite a few changes on 15. Go ahead, that's, that's fine. Councilor Florio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, in regards to all these changes, this is based on the will that was left by...
Frederick Powellin.
Right.
It's based on both his will and the state law.
Both the will and the state law, but this was never followed before? The will, nobody ever looked at the will, is what I'm saying?
Yep.
Okay.
Correct.
So, but everything stays the same, you still appoint the trustees?
Correct.
Who hires the librarian right now? Is it you?
Board of Trustees.
The Board of Trustees. When the Board of Trustees does the hiring, do they do, they hire in just the librarian, or they hire in also the people that work at the library? The clericals?
They're supposed to hire everyone.
Okay, so once they hire, does it go through our human resource? Do we do background checks? I'm concerned, I mean, we have a children's library and I'm a little concerned on that. Not that I don't trust the trustees, believe me, I trust them.
Well, that's the problem. The problem is, it's a $1.2 million enterprise that is being run by a somewhat volunteer Board of Trustees, and when they have HR issues, who do they go to? They should be coming to the city. They come to the city for their health benefits, their HR issues, um...
I, well, I'm not arguing the point.
Collective bargaining?
Right, the point, um, and maybe I should have one of the trustees up here, I'm a little concerned that if a trustee hires me and I have a record, I, something's wrong, uh, I, do they do a background check, is what I'm saying, on the person, because the concern is the children's library, I'm concerned about the childrens in the city of Everett.
I think HR does a query, Massachusetts query.
They do a query, okay.
But the mayor is the appointing authority for every other employee in the city except the library department, and it makes it a little difficult to manage the employees when the appointing authority is different. This is not unlike the Board of Fire Commissioners that the city council had repealed about 10, 12 years ago, where the Board of Fire Commissioners was the sole appointing authority of the fire department. It was a complicated way to manage the fire department, the chief and the mayor didn't have any authority over the employees, the city council saw it fit to repeal them and to give the appointing authority back to the mayor, this is not unlike that.
So, but as long as the query check gets done, because that was concerning me right now, you know, especially with the children's library, so...
This, the mayor...
The point is that we have a board that's, you know, people volunteer their times, and we have people on the board that are very well respected, and they're doing a great job, but we don't know what the future's going to bring, so...
And the mayor's responsible for negotiating the collective bargaining agreements for the union employees who happen to work in the, in the library, and the library trustees aren't involved in that. It's just, it's not, it's a, it's a separated process, and it should be...
We're not closing any libraries, I wouldn't have spent three, two, three, four million dollars to renovate the Shute Library, spend two, $300,000 on the latest HVA system, paint the building, carpet the building, that's not happening. You know, I know one, the Inquirer on Thursday wrote that the mayor, you know, never been to a library, you know, unfortunately there was a comment made when I was in my younger days, but I attended the Snell Library many times, I have much respect for the libraries in the city of Everett, and there's no, there would be no time that we would be collectively shutting down any library. It's a 1.2 million plus enterprise that should be on the responsibility of the taxpayers, the taxpayers put me and yourselves in charge of their tax dollars. We should be responsible for the hiring of the director and the staff in the library, ensuring that services are provided, that's all. The Board of Trustees, they could run the trust, they have a trust that Albert and Powellin left, it's about, I think, four, $500,000 in the trust, they'll be responsible for spending that money and being accountable for that money, and also working with, they're still board members, there's still appointees of the mayor approved by the city council, still working with us to ensure that there's programming, and making sure we have all the right materials, reference materials that we need in the facility, and as we know, libraries are evolving today, right? Everyone has their library right here on their telephones, on their nooks and so forth, so we're trying to do different things these days by having authors come in to speak or whatever it may be, to just try to get more traction to our libraries, and we have a great amount of people using our libraries, they're a vital program for our community. Again, my wife who went out, my wife's actually on the Board of Trustees herself, so isn't, you know, a lot of people that you know are on the, you know, we're not looking to discount what they're doing, but to ask a group of people who come to a meeting once a month to run the operation of the library, it's a daunting task for them to do, and that's all, there's no, you know...
So basically, if we, when we approve the budget library at the budget hearing?
Right.
Whether it's a million dollars or $2 million, whatever it is, whatever transfers are being done, they're not coming in front of us, we have no say once we've approved that budget. Is that what we're saying?
Good question, Sophie.
If we, if you, as the mayor, if we give you a million dollars to spend on city services for trucks and you decide to use it for something else, you have to come to us and transfer the money to a different department.
I always have to come before you for transfers, correct.
Okay, so, you know, this is sad for me to ask these questions, and I probably should know the answer, but, you know, I, you trust the lib, not that I don't trust them, the stuff is just, you know, it's the library, they're doing a good job...
There's no one we're saying we don't trust or we do, you know, it's not that at all.
This is not about trust, and I hope that they don't take this the wrong way.
Yeah.
I just...
The libraries are staying open, the libraries will operate, they'll be fully staffed...
Well, I would never vote to ever close a library, I mean, I don't care, no matter what, we always, you...
But that's not part of the...
No, and I understand that, my understanding is, and I, I'm learning something new and shame on me, after 14 years, almost 14 years up here, okay?
That's okay, I mean, we don't have all the answers either, sometimes we have to go back and do some research.
Right, and that's the question I'm saying is, like, if we give the library a million dollars and $100,000 is for capital improvement, they have to put a rug down.
We pay for all capital improvements. That's another piece of the puzzle here, the city pays for all the capital improvements on the libraries, all the facility maintenance.
Well, I was using that for an example, I was using that as an example, you know, line, okay, salary line items have to go with salary line items.
Correct.
Okay, you buy a book, it goes with a different line item.
We can pull the budget book, do we have a copy of the budget book?
Can you get a salary line item if someone retires and they have six months left of a salary, can they get that salary line item and go out and buy magazines without coming to us for a transfer?
I don't know the answer to that question.
I don't believe so.
They would have to go through, I'm sure, you know...
No, no, so, so, I'm a department head here, so, when I have money in my salaries account, I cannot expend that money for supplies, so I use it as a category, category one happen to be personnel.
That's not the question, we know that as department heads, we cannot do that, we have to come before the city council and ask a transfer, you know, we're asking...
You're asking if the library can do it? Maybe it'll still be governed by the same rules, because...
Well, I've never had to do a transfer in 14 years I've been here, that's why I'm asking the question.
I don't think they've ever overspent their budget, though.
So they've never overspent it, so good job, that's, they've never given money back either.
It's also because the city pays for a lot of other things outside their budget.
So the city is still paying for, okay, we give them a budget of $1.2 million, maintenance is not in there, so the city is still paying for maintenance guy to go clean and everything.
Was still operating in that manner as if it's just another department of the city?
There may be a line item in there, now, I'm not saying, I don't have the budget in front of me, there may be a line item in there for general expenses or some maintenance or something, I don't really, you know, to say, you know, that, maybe, Councilman, I mean, Clerk Canello is going to grab the budget, but any major improvements, like, for instance, the renovation of the Shute Library, we came before you with an authorization, we're paying the debt on that annually today, currently, you know, in their budget, we, you know, Councilor Mackays is pulling it out right now, but in their budget, I'm sure it's all personnel, it's probably the normal network, it's, you know, some furnitures, some books and so forth, thank you, Mike.
Mr. President, we have the librarian here, do we want to ask her to come up and into, she is the one running the libraries for X amount of years, she probably knows this better than anybody in this, other than maybe the mayor, but anybody better than all of us together.
Let's see if we get the answer right here.
Yeah, make a motion that we invite up our head librarian, Stacy DeBo.
All in favor to invite up head librarian?
Aye.
All in favor, the ayes have it.
We don't have enough room to invite everybody up, that's the problem.
Aye.
Can you, can you, Councilor Florio?
How does your budget work? You have line items like the regular city, like a regular city budget, right?
Exactly, and we have to, we have to expend them for what they're allocated.
For what they're allocated, and who approves that spending if you have...
The trustees. Well, the, in the budget, the director does, anything off budget, the trustees approve, the funds from the trusts and any other grants the library's been given, so, these are all reviewed, so when we buy a book, when we buy any item, it goes up and goes through the process in the city like any other purchase the city would make.
Yeah, so you get your PO and all that stuff like that, okay, but, so what is the trustee's job? What do they handle when it comes to money?
Oh, they handle several hundred thousand dollars in trusts, so if we want to make, they handle state aid, we have about $180,000 in state aid that we've been saving, so they administer all those funds, you know, we, they do a financial analysis every month at the meetings, so, yes.
And what happens if that money is not used? Is it something that carries over?
It stays, it stays with the, those funds stay with the library, these monies, if we don't use them, are returned to the city.
Right.
But those funds stay with the library, they're held in trust and they're invested for things the library might need in the future.
Okay, and what is your hiring process?
My hiring process?
The trustee's hiring process, well, how do they, how do...
The mayor, the mayor appoints the trustees on varied terms right now.
No, I'm talking about, if you right now have three people that retired and you have to hire...
Okay, so, we, it depends on whether it's a, if it's a union position, we go through HR, we post the job, people apply to HR, HR reviews those applications, they send them down to us, I usually, I like to hire by committee, so we usually have a committee, we make, we make a decision and we send it to HR, and then they perform the background checks and do what they call, what they used to call an onboarding.
Okay, so if you have four people applying for one position, and HR recommends two of them, no, they don't.
They don't.
They don't. Okay, so, how are you, how are you advertising this?
Through, it's, well, if it's a, if it's a union position, it's two weeks internally, usually on the city website, it's posted, and then it goes, because if it's a library job, it's posted on the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners site, so it's called MBLC, and that's where people typically go to look for library jobs, for example, electricians probably go to local whatever, librarians...
No, I understand that, but we have a lot of kids that graduate in high school and they may not go there, there's, they may not know that, there's some people that may not know that, I mean, you don't have to have, be certified to be a librarian other than your certification.
You do, you do have to be certified in Massachusetts to be a librarian, you have to hold a master's in library science.
A clerical?
No, for a librarian.
Not librarian.
Like a page?
No, no, like a page, oh no, typically the mayor does recommend pages and he usually sends me some people.
I'm talking about clerical workers, the librarian, the library has clerical workers, is that correct?
I'm sorry?
Library, they have clerical workers.
Uh, we have, yeah, we do, we have, we have a payroll clerk and an administrative assistant currently.
Okay, so, they go through HR for that?
Those are union positions, yes.
So you have to go through the union, you have to post it internally and then after that?
Exactly, exactly.
Okay, so, that's what I'm trying to get to, so if you have a payroll at the library, you have to post it, and if somebody from, if somebody from City Hall wants to go work for the library that's in the union, they're allowed to do so, right?
They have to, I think they have to bid, do they have to bid?
It's under the clerical contract specifically, they would bid and by seniority and experience they would, but the library union is different, and there was currently a position that doesn't require an MLS that HR was not involved in, they internally viewed their resumes, interviewed on their own, and made recommendations for a candidate, and HR and the mayor's office was not involved.
So if HR and the mayor's office is not involved, once they were hired, we still do a query check?
Oh yeah, everything goes through HR, prior to, we typically...
Well, obviously not everything goes through HR, that didn't go through HR.
It does, the job postings go through HR at the beginning, okay, so they're approved by HR.
But they don't recommend, they don't review the resumes and say, "Here, you should interview these people," the library does that, not HR.
We should do the posting.
Yeah.
My understanding was, I don't know...
I'm confused.
The, the...
It's part of the problem.
All the applications, all the applicants go through HR, HR collects all the applicants and sends them to us, so when you apply for a job at the library, you still have to go to, go through human resources.
To fill out the...
And I'm not saying the trustees are not qualified to hire people, don't get me wrong, and I certainly don't want this to be twisted, okay? We have trustees that we trust right now very well, and we like very well, we know them all, I, when we make a decision, we don't make it just for today, we make it for tomorrow, we make it for the future, so I want to understand before I vote on something what the duties are and make sure that our city and our children are safe in the library. So, and, I mean, if I come and volunteer for the library...
If you're talking about a query...
And you're asking me to look at someone's resume, I don't have the qualifications for it, you know, and I'm not saying the people that are there don't have the qualifications now.
Right, but even if, even if a candidate is selected, they still have to go through a rigorous background check, HR does do a query, they do, you know, they...
They're the only certified department to run a query.
Yeah.
Other than, other than the police, obviously.
Okay, so, everything that's been changed here is based on the trust...
And state law.
And state law.
Which repealed...
So there's not, because I got a little disturbing calls, you know, almost like, well, the paper's right, it's because the mayor doesn't like anybody, people have to understand that the mayor, the mayor appoints these people and we approve of the mayor's appointee, so obviously if the mayor doesn't like someone, he's not going to appoint them, you know what I mean, so I, I don't like those words and I don't like those accusations, and I'm not sticking up for the mayor, it's a fact, so, so anyways, all right, I think my questions have all been answered, other than, and I don't know what page that's on now.
We're on page 15.
I know, but the treasurer, where's the treasurer, the city treasurer is also on 15, right?
That's accordance with the will, the will states that the treasurer shall be the treasurer of the, the will, the money that he left.
The treasurer.
Yes.
And that's the change? That's one of them.
That's one, so, right now, okay, so right now, there's a treasurer at the library that's handling the money, is this, from what I understand?
No, the city handles the money for us, the city, all of, all of our requests, all of our bills are handled through city departments.
But what are we changing on the treasurer, I don't understand.
So the treasurer has to become a member of the Board of Trustees.
Our city treasurer...
Our city treasurer would become a member of the Board of the Trustees.
Has to be the treasurer for the Board of Trustees.
Okay, that's, I want to make sure I understood it, that's all, all right, thank you.
Councilor McGlaughlin?
Thank you, Mr. President. I actually have a question for Stacy, so, thank you for staying, Stacy. You were just talking about a position that went out to, for hire, that didn't go through the HR process, was that position hired, was the person?
No, 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 we're, it did go through the HR process.
So that position did go through the HR, so that position went through, so weighted the Board of Trustees, because I'm also, to be quite frank, I'm very confused by this. So the position went through the HR process like every other position goes through the HR process?
No, yes.
No.
One says yes and one says no.
Human resources had no involvement in the interview, interviewing or vetting of that position.
It goes through the same process that we use.
We were just handed, saying this is the person that we want... We were just handed, uh, saying this is the person that we want to work with. We, uh, other than maybe having an application on file, Human Resources had no involvement with that position.
And.
And which position are you talking about, Michael? Just so that we're clear.
So the one, the same one, we're talking about the same position, just talking about how the process went.
Which position? Okay, so, because there were several positions posted. We had a children's librarian.
Okay.
We had, you know, so.
And those all went through the H R. process?
Yes. They, what happens is.
I look up and I have the city solicitor shaking her head no at me and I have you telling me yes. So this is where I'm, this is honestly, this is where I'm confused.
You can look at the.
And, and then my other question is, has, what is the process? And that's okay, Stacy.
I'm not really prepared, but it, it went through the same process as every other.
And the question is, what has happened in years past when we had, uh, Ms. Abrams was here? I'd like to know, because I'll be quite frank, right, I'm gonna, I'd like to see if we could, I'm, make, I don't think we can make an amendment to this, correct? Because I'd like to see if we could strike out the libraries. This packet is very, has a lot of good stuff in it, no doubt about it. But to be able to keep the libraries in here, I know that I can't vote for this. So if we were to take the library out of this, can we extract, distract the libraries from this, have a separate conversation? And then maybe at a later point, we add it back in or whatever the case is? I would hate to vote no on a whole packet.
The language that's stricken out is language that state law says has to be stricken out. It does not, it says shall not, that language shall not apply to city libraries. That's why we eliminated that language.
Is it possible to strike out the libraries from this packet and to present this packet without the library language in it? And deal with the libraries down, down the road? You cannot. That is not, okay. Then I, I have no further questions. I'm good.
Councilor McKe- Councilor Palatino.
Thank you. Um, I had no intention to ask more questions, but unfortunately, the questions being brought up have added a few. All right, so again, I, I, I do understand state law has made, is required some of the changes here. But, uh, what I'm asking for is if you can give me a more detailed explanation of what the difference changes is, are as a result of state law. I'm not a lawyer. I mean, again, I have not had an opportunity to peruse state law to identify the differences. But, uh, so for that reason, I just can't accept the answer that it's state law. I need details. What is, what changes as a result of state law between how we've operated and how we plan to operate going forward?
If you think of the board of library trustees as, say, the school committee, the school committee is in charge of the school department. The board of library trustees would be in charge of all of the library, all of it. The state law eliminated that, those requirements for city libraries. So what's left is the Frederick Pollin will and his requirement for a board of trustees to oversee the money that he left the library.
All right, so state law states that a city does not, cannot, doesn't have to have a board of trustees. But one of the requirements in the will of Frederick Pollin is that there is a board of trustees.
Yes.
Okay. So we're not.
For the trust.
For the trust.
The trust don't.
What did I say? I said board of trustees.
Yeah, I believe, I just want to clarify that. That state law was stricken sometime between nineteen eighteen and nineteen twenty-five. And libraries have continued to function just in this way, as if it still said cities intend. And my understanding, Colleen can bear me out on this, that that state law, whoever was the scrivener responsible for making that change failed to do it in some proper fashion, is my understanding. The Mass Board of Library Commissioners is seeking to address that right now and is going, going to be proposing legislation to correct that. That is my understanding. But that law was actually repealed sometime between nineteen eighteen and twenty, nineteen twenty-five. And the legislative history is unclear as to the intent. So the, the Mass Board of Library Commission, Commissioners, which has three hundred and fifty, um, libraries across, across the state, and I believe twenty of them are city libraries, those have continued to function under the illusion that this law was in effect. But now that they're aware of it, thanks to Colleen, actually, Colleen's great research, um, there is some, they are, the, the board has been meeting and they did publish a statement. Um, and they will be meeting continually to, to make, you know, changes to that law.
And, and that's great. And if the state law changes, then we'll amend the, the lib- the, we'll amend this back. And I just want to clarify for the record that, that the city clerk and I, when we were going through this and proposing the amendments to present to the mayor, we looked at the state law for every board and commission in this admin code, not just the board of library trustees. And the clerk can verify that. We're not targeting any board and commission.
Yeah, no, no, please don't, please don't get, please don't get the wrong idea.
No, I, I don't have any.
I'm in no way, shape or form questioning your, your research or your commitment to getting the, the, the information correct. And I'm also not questioning anything regarding the operations of libraries. I think they've, they've operated very well. What I'm trying to understand is that we are still leaving the board of trustees in here because of the will.
Right.
So what is it that we're actually changing? That's the part I'm having problems at.
That they're not, um, in charge of the library as a whole, that they're not running the library.
Then what's their purpose?
They're not the appointing authority, to administer the trust, to spend the money the way Mr. Pollin asked them to in, in his will. The, um.
And how is that to, how is that to, to spend the money, to hire people? See, this is where I'm still trying, this is the part that's unclear.
It says it right here that, um, it should be expended for the purchase of furniture, equipment, other than supplies and books for said library for the care of the library grounds and for the enlargement or addition of the library building whenever the same shall be necessary, but for no other purpose.
But the city already takes care of that portion of it, correct? Uh, books, uh, care of library grounds. I mean, it's.
So we can, I guess the mayor can, um, send a request to the board to say, you know, can we use, um, part of that money for the trust to, you know, do the landscaping or something or, you know?
But they also have the right, because it doesn't apply to that, to say no, correct?
They can, yes. It would be, they oversee the money. And I also sent, um, my research to outside counsel to see if, um, what we were proposing was, um, valid and correct. And they verified my opinion.
Right. Well, I, again, I still don't see the change, the difference here, because again, the, the misconception, if I, if I could just finish. No, I, I understand, but I think I make the point to my colleagues, because the question came up, and this was part of the reason why I stuck, I put my hand back up. The library cannot operate and function under the money of the trust exclusive to anything else, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. So, and again, we want a high quality, as high quality libraries are able to do. So it's a partnership. It's a partnership between the funds that are, that are, that are managed by the board of trustees and, and, and within their, their realm of, of how they're able to utilize that, that, those funds by virtue of the will. And the city manages everything else regarding the building and all of that. Is that correct?
And the employees.
Okay, then I still don't see the difference. I don't see what's changing here. This is what's throwing me off here. I'm not sure why this has become such a huge thing when in fact, it's not changing the operation or how mon- funds are dispersed in any way, shape or form. They still manage the funds ba- under the const- under the constraints of the will. So that doesn't change. And this doesn't change that. And all this is doing is saying under state law that monies can't be used for other things like, supplies, books, grounds, which is already the case, because it's not money they're, they're allocating or spending or asking to appropriate either. So I'm confused by this. And this is, I think, the part that's causing the biggest concern for the people who are here in attendance. Their concern too, because they don't fully understand why this is coming about. And for that reason, I think this is a very disrupted piece, when we can't get a clear-cut answer other than state law. And if the, was the commi- uh, committee, what's the, the overseeing of lib- library question?
Mass Board of Libraries.
Mass Board of Libraries has identified an issue they're going to address. Granted, I understand you have to contend with the law as it stands today.
Right.
I realize and recognize that. But this has created a lot of disruption and I don't see the benefit or the need or the why to do this. Nothing's changed. They still send their employees through H R. for screening. They're still query-checked. They still have to adhere to union.
There's no authority from the city over any of the employees.
Outside of union.
Out, outside of.
How many employees is that?
About thirty, full and part-time. It's about eleven, well, um.
How many are non-union?
I'm sorry?
How many are non-union?
Um, a majority.
We don't, we don't even have authority over the union employees.
A majority or, I'd say.
Not authority on every, any union employee. The union still is part of negotiations, so that's, that's a general statement. But I understand what you, you're saying by that. But it doesn't, that applies equally to any, any one of our union employees. There's still a, is a cause and effect. There is a due process that you have to follow to be able to do that correctly.
If, if a union employee, um, violated a workplace rule, it wouldn't go through H R. It has to go through the board of trustees.
The, the way the contract is written, it, it, they, they grieve it, they grieve it to the director and then it goes to the trustees and then it goes to the mayor.
Right, but if it's a disciplinary action, it goes to the board of trustees, not the mayor. It's a discipline.
That is, that is to protect the library from the political process. There's a very good reason for that. In times past, people have been concerned about banned books or, you know, disenfranchising a class from, from library service. So the reason that that existed for a long period of time historically was to keep the library insulated from a political process. And, and I'm not saying this mayor would ever do it, but a knee-jerk reaction, say someone came on, came in and found Mein Kampf on the shelf. Okay? And they got really upset. And, you know, they went to the mayor and the mayor would, you know, it, the, the trustees actually provide the library. And this is why they exist, slightly independently, not really, not really independently, but slightly independently from the political process. And that's why all these safeguards were in place historically.
However, it's section twenty-one of chapter seventy-eight eliminated that.
In nineteen twenty, whatever it is.
And all due respect, again, the law that is on the books now, it doesn't matter. It's obdural moment, whether it was seventeen seventy-six or nineteen twenty-six. If it's on the books as it stands, that is the statute. That's what we have to follow. Uh, and in all fairness, and with the utmost respect for the entire library board and the employees that work there. H R. is a complicated function i- in, in any, any organization, as we, we all are well aware. I, without knowing the full backgrounds of everyone that's on the board in terms of any H R. skills, I mean, backgrounds, experience, education and training is paramount importance in my book. I, I myself have close to twenty years H R. and legal experience. We have a city solicitor that we work in conjunction with every day, has been city solicitor for what, eighteen, seventeen years. Uh, we have our H R. director who is, who is a practicing attorney as well. The skill set remains on the administrative side, and I will argue that all day long. We, we are skilled i- in, in those functions. And that's why we think it's, it's important that we have a little bit more of a say-so, because, you know, if, if anything happens and the city gets sued, it's the, the board of library trustees, they're not going to go after the board of library trustees. They're going to come after the city of Everett.
As, has anything occurred to cause this in recent year? I mean, I'm not aware of anything happening down the library. I mean, I do understand the politisase, the, the issue with, that the librarian had brought up. Back when I first ran for office, I owned a comic book store. A person who didn't like me went to my, went to person I was running against and told me I was, told him I was selling pornography. Now I challenged anybody to come in my store and, and find any pornography. That person's interpretation of pornography was Batman and Superman and Spider-Man. So I mean, yes, politicizing can be, can, can be a problem, especially when you're in an element where free speech is, is paramount. So I do understand that concept, you know? I'd be concerned if I saw Mein Kampf on the shelf and just had a conversation with a person who's trying to, trying to sell, trying to sell some Nazi memorabilia. I'm not comfortable with, with assisting them in selling that. Somebody else might be. But these are things that, again, that, you know, we, we, we need to keep the, the political side out of it. Again, I'm not sure where I stand on this. I really, I'm really not. I think that a lot, too much has gone on about this and I don't see the, the differen- I don't see how the differences are significant enough to warrant raising all these people's concerns here. So again, I just wanted to, again, the main reason I, I asked to talk again was because I want to make it clear that people understood that the library is not a self-sufficient operation. The funds, the, uh, donated, you know, given to us by Frederick Pollin were for one purpose and the city subsidized the difference to keep the operation running at the level it is. And Mr. Mayor, you did do an excellent job down to shoot library, you know, it's gorgeous down there. Uh, I had actually, being lip, being a resident from the other side of the city, I never went in there. Because I spent all my time in the Pollin library. But my wife did. My wife grew up in that library and she's, has, has, has had some very favorable, very nice things to say about it. And that's all we're concerned with, is that the operational library still continues to operate in the same manner and the same quality of service that it does. And you really need to tell me what the, where the lack of quality is occurring that's creating all of this.
We're not saying there's any lack of quality. We're complying with state law and the trust. That's why these language changes are here.
And this couldn't be amended in a different way to be able to find a more happy medium without causing these people to be all concerned?
I'm not sure what the concern is. I, there, there were rumors spread that the mayor was abolishing the libraries. We all know that's completely false.
No, I, I, and I, and I know that's not the case either.
All we're doing is changing the language to say that the board of library trustees has control over the entire library, meaning operations, employees, spending, everything.
Okay.
But can I address that rumor?
Can I just finish my statement?
I'm sorry.
Section twenty-one eliminated the, um, eliminated that, uh, for cities. So that's what we did. We deleted it. We deleted all the language that mirrored the state law and then we added the language about the, the trust. The library director, when she receives her, if this is amended and, and approved, she will receive her budget and she will spend her budget like every other department head does in the city. And then the, she'll have to ask the board of trustees to allow her to spend money under, under the trust. But everything else will be spent just like I spend my budget. Same thing.
All right, I, Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. President, I just have one quick question. I'm going to relinquish the floor. Uh, was there a sign-in sheet, uh, created tonight? That doesn't operate the same as a regular meeting in that respect. Okay. All right, I'll, I'm going to, residents are here who may have various opinions of what the concerns are. But I'm not going to, I want to, let's get through the rest of this and then we'll make. Excuse me?
I think Mrs. DeBo.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, the mayor's been very generous to us in terms of our budget and I've needed a lot of stuff. So I haven't, he hasn't told me he's closing anything yet. I hope he wouldn't keep it a secret since his wife's on the board. But, um, you know, he's been as generous as, you know, the budgets allowed, I think. So I haven't, I don't know where that rumor came, came, but as, as the library director, you know, I ha- unless he's not telling me. Um, I haven't, I haven't heard that rumor. I haven't. And that would just, I mean, we're looking, I mean, we're working aggressively to expand library services, so.
Yeah, no, I, I, I heard that rumor and briefly dismissed it. I know half the people in the audience here personally. And I know that if, if there was any, you know, I did a little looking, there's no, I don't, I've not heard any plans that there's any plans to close it. So I don't, I don't really kind of keep harping on that, but I think that becomes a little deflected.
I just want to make sure, I know, I am not closing a library here. I wouldn't have spent three, four billion dollars two, three years ago to rebuild a library. Doesn't make sense, right?
Yeah, no, I, I honestly, Mr.
And five, yeah, five hundred thousand on brand.
Honestly, Mr. Mayor, I think any discussion about, about whether closing or not is clouding away from the need of reissue here. And I, I agree with you a hundred percent there.
That's equal to my eighty thousand dollar rights, just to say.
Don't say that too loud.
Yeah. Thank you. Um, I'm going to elect the floor. Thank you.
Councilor McGlaughlin, do you have a question?
I, I do, because something else came up after I said I wasn't. If the state is going to look at the rule, that, the law that you guys are talking about in the Mass General laws of nineteen twenty-six or whatever the year is that was made, should, and then Colleen, you said that we would maybe have to come back and amend this based on their ruling or their, their opinion or their decisions. Should we not put this on, I don't know if that's going to happen.
I, I don't think it's going to happen anytime soon, no.
Okay, so I didn't know if that was three months out or.
It's Colleen's great legal work is what brought it to light. No one, no one was aware of it. So whoever's doing the research did an excellent job.
So that.
I think the only change here, here is that the administration would like to work with the library director on H R. issues at the library, rather than having the board of trustees work with the library director on H R. issues. That's where we can resolve issues, resolve issues when employees who are leaving, left, or don't feel safe, whatever it may be. We can work with the, no one wants to get rid of Stacy DeBo. We want to work with the library director on the H R. issues and make sure those H R. issues are resolved correctly in the best interest of all the taxpayers and the residents in the city of Everett. That's the change we're making. Now, if I had to count votes on the library board of trustees to make any changes or moves, I probably would say I would have them. I am not going to put a majority of women, who are all nice ladies and mothers and so forth, like my wife and my sister-in-law and others.
Also very intelligent.
And, thank you, um, and Councilman Capone's wife and so forth. They should not be handling H R. issues. Let the administration work with the library director on H R. issues with employees currently leaving, coming and going. That's the change we're looking to make. That's what's before you tonight. There should be no other discussion. There should be no other discussion. Does no one close any libraries? We fund the libraries, we rebuild libraries, we're renovating libraries, we're putting new roofs, HVA systems, rugs, painting, books, whatever they ask, we give them.
Not everything.
And I, and I echoed, I agree, Mayor. You have been very good with the libraries and I, and I wholeheartedly believe that you support the libraries. I know you do. We've talked about it. My question is, where do we drive, how did we get here? Is this because of an employee that applied for a job that was, so where?
I think that that should be held in a different, I don't think this is.
Yeah, we were, we were researching every board and commission when we were going through to amend the admin code and we happened upon that language in the statute, just like we happened upon other languages, say the cultural, we called it the Cultural Commission, it should be the Cultural Council. And there's a CMR that talks about all of the duties and responsibilities for a Cultural Council. The Disability Commission, we looked at chapter 40 and sections 8A through whatever, talks about all the other different commissions. The PACS Commission from the last time. It was just in basic research and looking at the admin code and seeing what needed to be amended. That's all. That's, we weren't targeting anybody or any commission or anyone.
Okay. All right, I'm, okay. I just, when I ask a question and I get you, Colleen, shaking your head one way and this, librarian saying something totally different, sitting at the same table concerns me, to be honest, that there's more to the, more to what meets the eye, if you will. So, that's why I'm just trying to figure out where.
That code has implications for every library in the state and we have 20 cities in the state and I have to say, Colleen's, Colleen's research was excellent. And the Mass Board of Library Commissioners who have been functioning under this code for a long time was not aware of it. So, that's really impressive. I mean, so, but they're, they're going to have to address it now because it does have implications for some libraries.
And then, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if to try to settle some of the fears that are in the city because I'll tell you, I, I got numerous amount of phone calls, many of them are in the audience and I've got, I got numerous calls. And I don't know if anybody, if anybody wants to allow the audience to ask a question so that their fears can be settled. I don't know if that's tonight or another meeting, but I think that there's so much hidden.
I don't know if there's any, I don't know if there's any.
Unfortunately, it's my anniversary and I have to leave.
Happy anniversary, Counselor.
And I've never done this before, all right? So, I have just one quick question.
And it's actually Counselor, it's actually Counselor Hanlon's birthday tonight as well, so happy birthday to Counselor Hanlon as well.
Is this something that we'll have to vote on tonight? I have never walked out on a vote and I don't plan on doing it tonight.
There's no vote tonight.
There's no vote tonight that's going to get recommended to the council. To the city council, is that correct?
This is going to the council on your next Monday.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. No, I knew that, but I want to make sure.
Thank you, Counselor.
We just wanted to give you an explanation of the changes. It's an up and down next Monday.
Counselor McGlaughlin, you all set?
So, this is going to be an up and down next Monday night in the complete package. So, my thought is, should it go to another committee so that we can have input from the public? Obviously, they've taken their time tonight to come here and to hear this conversation and I think we owe it to them at some point to be able to have their answers, their questions answered or allow them.
Open it to the public.
So, we can refer out of this committee to another committee, right?
This is what you've been doing. I think we are, I think we are talking about concerns.
Why send it to another committee? We can open it to the public tonight. That was the whole idea, right?
If you want to open to the public.
Make it in a form of emotion.
So, we can make a motion.
I was just going to, Counselor, and I thought you were asking me not to do that because you had a leak for your anniversary.
No, I got a half hour, move it.
Do I have a motion on the floor?
Make the motion.
We're on page 15.
Make a motion that we, that we open this up to public.
Just open it to the library right now and then we'll continue with the rest.
Second.
Well, I have a motion on the floor. I have a motion on the floor and I have a second, correct?
Second.
On the favor?
Aye.
All the polls, the ayes have it?
Can I ask a question? You want to just finish it and then open it up?
Well, I think most of the questions are going to be on, on these topics now, the library.
The concerns on the library, on the topic of the library, so that, that was the recommendation. It's up, I don't care.
Could I have a, I'll ask a question to the audience. Can I have a raise, anybody raised their hand who may have a comment or a question from the audience?
Thank you.
Question, sorry. I have four.
I don't know if you want to change.
Four statements.
Well, we have, we have a motion on this, so I'm going to invite, I'll invite the first.
Yeah, let, let's just go item, member, my, my.
We have four people that raised their hand. I'll have one person come up, just state your name, please, and your position, if you're on the trustee. May I make sure that mic is on, please? Okay, thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Patricia Els. I live at 30 Buckham Street and I've been a librarian my entire life. So, I have just a brief statement that I wanted to make about the proposed changes. And this isn't directed at any administration, certainly not yours, but for the future of libraries to serve as independent entities. The trustees appointed by the mayor, so he chooses great people, serve on the Board of Trustees and the library director reports to the board. So, the city is involved with the people that are put on the Board of Trustees, again, chosen by the mayor. It's a perfect balance that allows the library to run without having to adjust itself to the political changes through the years. And it's been running this way since the doors first opened in 1895 when Mr. Pollin founded the library in memory of his son Frederick. I urge you to leave the library administration as it is. We don't need these changes. The library must stay independent aside from political things because while we have someone great now, we don't know who we're going to get. And the library shouldn't have to keep adjusting to changes. Just leave it alone. Leave it alone. So, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. We have a next speaker, please? Just state your name, please.
Patricia Graciano. So, I just want to tell you guys a little bit about myself and my relationship with the library. And a little bit about a history of myself as a kid that grew up in Everett, you know? Everett is a place that is known for the kids, for the good kids that come out of this small city. We give a lot of credit to the high schools, the sports teams, but we usually don't recognize the library as one of those places that deserve credit, too. I am a product example of the type of kids that come out of Everett. I went to the Devens Elementary School. I attended the Pollin when it was a junior high school and finally went to Everett High School. Like most of us after high school, I went to college in Rhode Island and after four years came back to live in Everett. Everett kids do, like, just like every other good Everett kid does, we always come back home where we grew up. I then commuted from Everett to Suffolk Law School in Boston at night until graduation. Throughout my entire academic journey, no matter what was going on in my life, the library was a place I could call home. Now, one could say, well, you can say that about any library, but the reality of the matter is you can't. See, the reason why I could call the library a place of peace and home is because it was the staff that have made, has, that have been in there since I was at the Devens that have made it home. It was the years of trust, relationship and understanding that made it home. It was the ability to tell others who were pursuing an academic dream similar to mine that I could safely recommend the Everett libraries because I knew the staff would take good care of them like they took good care of me. So, I ask you all today, why try to fix something that is not broken? Why change the libraries that has been responsible producing good kids year after year? Why in the world are we even here questioning this today? That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Just state your name, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Patty Cheever. I, I just wanted to speak specifically to Counselor Napolitano's question about why everybody was so concerned about the changes that were being proposed, particularly for the trustees. In the original language that was, I believe, presented to the council two weeks ago, the section having to do with Board of Library Trustees was completely stricken from the code. So, that was what was concerning people. I see, and we see now that that's been adjusted by the new language concerning Mr. Pollin's will, which is good news for all of us who support the trustees. The other question that I had, and Mrs. Mahia may have an answer to this, I know that the law sort of doesn't require that cities and towns have a Board of Trustees for their libraries. I don't think it specifically denies them that right because every other city and town that I know of in the Commonwealth has a library Board of Trustees.
For towns, the towns require a Board of Trustees. Section 21 of chapter 78 says that sections 10 to 12 inclusive and section 16 to 18, which have since been repealed, shall, shall not apply to cities. So, it's non-discretionary because it says shall. And again, I ran my opinion by outside counsel and they verified.
And I don't know anything about the law, but my question then is, why does every other city in the Commonwealth also have one? And I'm sorry, I just completely lost my train of thought with that. We will, in the end, if that were to, were to have passed and it's not going to now, been the only city in the Commonwealth that didn't have a library Board of Trustees. But that's kind of, that's kind of moved at this point. I think also in some of the conversations tonight, we were conflating a couple of things, the trustees versus the structure, the reporting structure for the director of the library and that is being covered in another section in the code unless that language has also changed because I have the old changes here in front of me. But under section M, Department of Libraries, is where the reporting structure for the director of the libraries is to be addressed. So, I think we may be conflating two things here. I don't know if, if you wanted to bring that piece up. My pages aren't numbered. Yeah. It's, it's under Department of Libraries, I think it is. So, I don't know if you want to bring that up while you're discuss, while this subject is being discussed.
Instead of the, instead of the director being appointed by the Board of Trustees because the state law has, doesn't.
Doesn't require.
Doesn't require it, the mayor is the appointing authority. So, the mayor would appoint the library director. The, the city council would have to approve the appointment and the term would be three years like every other department head.
Okay. Okay. So, that would, even though we all still have a Board of Trustees, their responsibility for that based on this language that's being presented from Mr. Pollin's will is no, would no longer be the responsibility of the trustees?
Correct.
Okay, interesting. So, any library, any librarian that's appointed would only be appointed to a term of three years? So, every three years would be switching?
No. No, no, because every department head in the city is, has an appointment term for three years and they're renewed every three, every three years that they're renewed.
The admin code.
I'm sorry.
The admin code.
The administrative code, yeah. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please? Just state your name.
Hi, my name's Renee Solano. How are you guys this evening? My first question is for the mayor and it's not so much a question, but something maybe that, you know, that I ask you to consider and think about. You said something tonight about that you wouldn't appoint anyone on your, on any board or commission that you didn't like, which I sort of see, you know, how that makes sense. But on the other hand, you know, if a person is qualified.
I like everybody.
That's a good answer, but, you know, like on a.
Everybody don't like me.
On a, everybody?
But I like everybody.
But, you know, like on, on a serious note, I, I respectfully ask you to consider that you might be missing out on someone who's very qualified and would do very well on a board or position if, you know, like somebody that you might have friction with but wouldn't be rude to people or, you know, like anything on, anything like that. But I think that you might consider that you might be missing out on some very qualified people if that is, you know, one, that, that's a deal breaker for your criteria. Oh, if you want to.
He cannot, it's only statements.
I'm sorry. Okay. Okay, thank you. Sorry, I didn't know, I didn't know the rules.
That's okay.
Oh, you can't.
No, it's only statements and then if you want to talk to one of the councils or the mayor afterwards, that's.
Okay, thank you. I apologize then.
That's okay.
I apologize then. So, that's my, that's my statement to be determined, to be talked about later about that. The next thing that I want to say is that, you know, growing up to me, I used the library a lot. I did not grow up in Everett, I grew up in California, sorry. I know that's like a bad thing around here. Thank you, I appreciate that very much. But libraries are, they're sacred as far as I'm concerned and they should be run without, you know, despite my political opinions or anybody's political opinions here for any reason of, you know, friction between people or whatever, that shouldn't come into it because the library is a place for kids and adults. People look for jobs there. People, you know, get, you know, movies and things, read books they could never afford to buy. I've used the libraries for, you know, studying for college. I put myself through college and, you know, that's not an easy thing to do. And, you know, every, every penny counts. And sometimes, you know, having the info available to you at the library, it's, it's in some ways life or death because, you know, it might be something that will get you a job that can get you out of poverty or it might be, you know, entertainment when you're having a bad day. So, you know, as far as I'm concerned, libraries are sacred and as far as I'm concerned, they should be independent of, you know, my, my political beliefs, my whatever or anyone else's. They're, they're Switzerland as far as I'm concerned. And that's really important to me and probably to a lot of other people. I can't say I speak for anyone, but I have a friend who is not able to be here tonight because she has a family, a family member that's ill, but I know that she would have a lot to say also about libraries being very important to the people in this community and, well, any community, but since we're talking about the Everett libraries, the ones in this community. I have, every time I've set foot in to the libraries here, you know, the, the librarians and the staff are very welcoming, you know, anybody can go in there, they, you know, they don't, you know, nobody's asked who they are, where they're from, what they, you know, you have a library card, you can, you know, take out, you can take out books and, and music and whatever. So, that's my two cents about the library. And third, and I'll try to keep this short and sweet since I know I've been taking up a lot of time, I would really like to see with any of these kind of changes, one meeting with, you know, without the, without everything available, like I just went down to the city clerk's office to get a copy of the newest changes and there was nobody there to get them for me. And I do realize that, you know, everyone's up on the podium right now because there's a meeting, I get that. But that should, sorry? Right, but I went down there before 7:30. And that, that's, you know, I, I mean, I realized like, you know, you can't have a thousand people on your staff, but that should have been available to, to the public before this meeting started. You're not voting on it? Okay, well, you're not voting on it tonight? That's good, I'm glad to hear that. This is a, this is a serious thing. This isn't like, and I'm glad that you, that all of you are taking it seriously. It's not something, you know, that you should take lightly. A lot of these changes are major changes to the city charter and there's a lot of them. So, one or two meetings, I don't think that's enough time to get public input. I don't think that's enough time to study what people, you know, a lot of people couldn't come tonight because, you know, two weeks' notice and a lot of other things going on. Maybe another couple of meetings with, say, you know, and maybe not always here in the maybe not always here in the city chambers. Maybe you should have one, you know, I'm not an expert on which ward is which, but you know, on the other side of town, you know, like maybe one of the senior centers or something for people who don't have cars and can't, you know, and can't be here. So that's my two cents. Thank you very much for your time.
Any more speakers, please? We save the best for last.
Hi, my name is Michelle Capone and I live at 383 Broadway in Everett. I prepared a long statement based on the, based on the other language, so I'm going to take excerpts from it because I still have to look at, calling's loud, because I still have to look at the new language. But a little bit about what we do for the Board of Trustees. I would have brought a cake. I would have, I would have, I would have done something nice. I promise. I didn't know. I've served on the Library Board of Trustees for seven years. Four years as chairperson, three years as vice chairperson. I've also been a member of the Friends of the Everett Public Libraries for 16 years. I served on the SHU Library Capital Campaign Committee for four years and served on the Everett Literacy Committee for four years. I'm deeply involved in the Everett Library System for nearly two decades and fully understand all the good its resources and programs provide for this community. I appreciate this opportunity to discuss with you the importance of keeping the Library Board of Trustees intact as I know it. Again, I have to review the new language because the language I had was entirely redlined. So I'll be prepared with that new language for the next meeting. I also want to thank you, the members of local and state government, who've been steadfast in their support towards the libraries. Because I know there's been past visits to the State House on Library Legislative Day and you've always been kind and we appreciate that. And I'm also grateful for your support and participation at our many library programs. I see a lot of familiar faces here and by becoming members of the Friends of the Everett Public Libraries. So I did a little research too on the Board of Trustees. And the Board of Trustees does have a long, rich history as being an independent service to Everett. And the first group was elected without pay in 1880. And there were nine members. And it's significant to note that the trustee board has been in service well before the construction of the Pollan Library in 1895. So maybe that's something that a little bit more research has to be, has to be looked into. I was surprised about that too, but I think it's great that the board has been around since 1880. We are advocates for all things pertaining to the library. That's our job as trustees. We work in partnership with the director to reach goals expressed by the community. Public meetings are held monthly and trustees serve on subcommittees, personnel, building and grounds, marketing and finance. And together, we envision the future of the libraries and we have responsibilities that include long-range planning, drafting policies, upholding the principles of equal access to information, and the free exchange of ideas. We care about the maintenance of our two historical buildings and we always pay careful consideration to expending financial resources. We are deliberate in the library's choice of technology, hours of operation, keeping the collections updated, and proper staffing levels. We are always trying to be a presence at community events. And all of this is possible because we work in tandem with the director. And the director is selected and hired by the board. I know that's a little bit further down in your packets. So I want to say too, that it's an honor personally to serve on the Board of Trustees. Because for 139 years, hundreds of members have served with distinction. And I'm so proud to be part of that history. And I'm proud to say too, that our board has worked well with 32 different administrations. I'm proud of that. I'm really proud of that continuity. And positive feedback from patrons, it helps fuel the love we have for what we do. So at the library, it's not just about books we care about. It's the people we're able to touch through our hard work. See, when someone tells me that they went to an author's visit, or they learned how to knit, or they researched their genealogy, or either that they discovered the wonders of beekeeping or baking, it means that our libraries have improved their lives and broadened their horizons. So the library is about community and an independent Board of Trustees and director are crucial parts in bringing the world and all of its resources to the people of Everett. Please keep the Board of Trustees, as I know of it, and their independent selection and oversight of the director intact so that we may continue the longstanding practice of successful, independent service to this great community. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Do we have, excuse me? Okay, sure. Any more, any more speakers?
Oh, I'm sorry. Is anyone else?
Okay.
So I'm reading this letter and of course I'll redact her address. Dear Chairman DeLaSola.
Who is this from?
Oh, I'm sorry. Her name is Samantha Lambert. She is, I believe she's one of the library trustees.
Yes.
And she could not be here tonight, but she wrote a letter and she asked if I would read it for her.
Sure.
So, dear chairman, my name is Samantha Lambert, resident of, unfortunately, I will be unable to attend the April 11th Committee of the Whole Meeting regarding the proposed amendment to the City of Everett Administrative Code, but wanted to be able to participate and would be happy to speak to any member of the city council. I had spoke at your meeting on March 25th regarding my concerns of the elimination of the Library Board of Trustees. I continue to feel strongly that the Board of Trustees of the Everett Public Libraries are a necessary body and important to the future of the libraries here in Everett. After having had the opportunity to look through all of the proposed amendments, it led me to feel strongly that perhaps a larger conversation of how boards and commissions are staffed may be in order. Would it not serve Everett better to consider an application process rather than an appointment to the, our boards and commissions? A number of our surrounding cities and towns do this, and though I would have to seek out the data, I would be interested in knowing how that has increased investment of time, resources, and representation by the board members. Additionally, while I understand it is important to include members that own property in Everett but do not reside here, I believe it would be reasonable to limit the participation to no more than 25% of the board or commission's makeup with the other 75% being residents. Or perhaps 80% and include residents and business owners from within city limits. The argument for creating a lifetime term for the city clerk's position seems applicable here as well. To take the politics out of appointments and be sure that those serving are doing so for the good of Everett and its resources. As always, please feel free to reach me by phone, redacted of course, or email me at this address. I appreciate your time and service to our city. And thank you for letting me interrupt.
That's no problem at all.
Mr. Chairman, I just have one quick, I'm sorry.
If we had no more speakers, I'll close that party meeting on that. On the favor?
Aye.
I suppose the ayes have it closed. Councilor Florio?
I just want to make it clear because every speech and everybody that come up, thank you very much for speaking, but as far as I know, we are not eliminating the trustees. Okay. Because that's been, that's been saying on and on. So, so the trustees of the library remain intact. Okay. It's just some of the duties will be taken away. Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry, I have to go now.
Prefer go to Council, I prefer go to Council McGlaughlin. I've been sitting here listening to our colleagues speak, asking the questions and the concerns of our residents. It's almost like there's a, someone's putting a black cloud over the library and the trustees. As far as I know, the library's in our closing. The trustees, positions may change, may change on their duties, but no one's losing jobs. This is what we keep saying over and over again. I know there's concerns, believe me, before you came here. I'm hoping these questions and answers have helped you. But just sitting up here watching all this, it's like the city wants to shut down all the libraries and build condos. It's just, it's crazy how rumors or whatever's going on is going on here. But I just wanted to speak on that being up here as the chairman, Council McGlaughlin.
Thanks, President. President, I echo your comments and I was just going to say the same. But I think that Michelle Capone put it best, and that is that if the position, the responsibility or the duties of the position changes, I think that's what a lot of, a lot of members are concerned. I think they were concerned, A, by whether or not there'd be a Board of Trustees in the first place. And I think the administration went back and changed that, that thought or found some new language in the trust, the Pollan Libraries' trust that they had to keep them. But they want their responsibilities to stay intact as they've known it since the 1800s. And I think that that's what they're asking us to do is to not make changes to their responsibility and their duties because it has been working since then. Why are we changing something that's not broken? And I think that's what we've heard.
Can we do that with the state law and the trust? That's, this is the problem. Can we leave their positions the way they are right now in their duties? I'll ask, I'll ask you, solicitor. Excuse me? Right. It's not us making the changes or the mayor. It's the changes from the state and from the trust, correct?
Correct.
Of what their duties were yesterday or what they're going to be tomorrow? All right.
Mr. Chairman, could we move on to the next item? Because again, we've, we now have, we still have.
Correct.
Roughly.
Just a quick.
Forty-five, forty-five pages to go through.
One second.
Just a quick point of information. So I just want to let you know, the reason why I've been stepping out is because the original copy we had, had the Board of Trustees being removed. And that was my conflict. And I'm looking at this piece tonight and it says that they're not being removed. They're just going to change their function.
Yes.
So I do not have a conflict any longer. And that's why I'm here. And I'm also here by necessity because we don't have a quorum otherwise. So apparently I don't have a conflict anymore.
Good to have you back. Your wife did a good job. Just. Okay, we'll move on. If everybody's all set with page 15?
No, that's all right.
We'll move on to page 16. No, no changes on 16. Do we have any questions on 16? There's no changes. So move to page 17. There's a small change on top. If no questions on 17, if I go too fast, just let me know.
Mr. President, on 17, what does change with, I thought this was the position of the associate members currently, and we see it's in red now. So. Oh, the, so the planning board does not have associate members. That's, that's good. I thought every board had three, three associate members.
No, this will, just the zoning board, so far.
Okay, so just the zoning board currently has three associate members, no other board. Thank you for clarifying that. I thought it was three per board. Thank you.
I'll say, Councilor? Page 18.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilor Paul Tano.
How many associate members are on the planning board? It doesn't state this.
If you pass this, I think it's, I think it would be three.
Should it say that? I'm just saying is it, it describes what it is. It doesn't identify how many.
But neither does the zoning board. So in the law, it just allows you to do them. So we didn't define how many. At the end of the day, the mayor still has to present the budget because they're paid and, and you'd have to approve them. So it would be determined by you. But the proposal is what the, the Planning Board and Concom Conservation Commission requests to have the same amount of alternate members as the zoning Board of Appeals. So that's what we did. We just left the language in generally as it was in the ZBA language.
So Clark Hanilow, you can see that if we lead the.
Excuse me, I still have the floor. Thank you. All right. So, but the thing is that when you read this, unless you know to cross-reference, you're not being clear. You're just describing what an associate member is on a piece that does not currently have an associate member. Shouldn't there be some language in there?
It's the exact same language as is in the zoning board.
But if you don't know to cross-reference that, you wouldn't know that.
Well, at the end of the day, it's still your decision. And maybe we want less.
Show me, what's the section in, regarding the zoning board? So I can see the language, please. I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm just trying to be consistent.
Yeah.
And I don't mean consistently difficult, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Page 22?
Thank you. All right. So this spells out where that there's three associate members on the planning board.
It doesn't. That's what, that's what we were stating. We made it the same as the ZBA, which did not spell out how many members were in there.
Right. But that means that you could decide to put 10 associate members because it's not spelled out. I'd like to see it spelled out.
Okay.
That's fine.
Okay. Thank you.
But that's how, we just copied the language that was in the old code.
No, I, but again, if it's, if it's vague in the old code, it's vague on the new code. So fix it.
Well, we left it that way so you could make a decision if you wanted two, three, or four. At the end of the day.
Well, we can't amend this. That's the thing.
You can't, but you, you approved the budget and confirmed the members.
Right. That's my point is we can't amend this.
But you. But you approved the appointment.
And confirm this, this out, the pay. So if you cut that or don't confirm the person, that's how you would.
You're saying associated members come up before and approved by us?
Of course they do. Just like any other appointee of a board and commission. That's why we didn't change it. Maybe you only want two. Maybe you want four. Maybe there's a need for more or less. We didn't want to make it a determiner, you know, a set number as the state law allows us. So we just left it. I know it's vague. I understand. But that's how it was before and that's why we left it that way.
You know, the reason you make these changes is to eliminate interpretation, but you're providing interpretation. So that's.
No, we're leaving it open for you and for the, for the administration.
Leaving it open for anybody. And it could also be open to abuse. So I'm just saying is that, you know, I would think that if you're, if you're limiting it to a certain number of backups.
We can change it to three.
You identify who, how many of those backups are. If they're paid, especially if they're paid.
We can make it three.
Thank you.
Council McGlaughlin.
So, Mr. President, just to clarify, I'm hearing from our clerk committees that we can't make amendments and then can we suggest amendments?
This is, this is the administration's piece and he has.
So can we make, can we suggest amendments to the administration? That we would like to see whether or not we're going to vote up or down on this. May, may hinder on one.
The mayor would have the full authority to make any amendments.
That's why I think we can sit here and go page by page, but I mean, it's either an up or down vote. I don't think we have any real influence on this unless the administration is willing to work with us collaboratively to come to middle of the road on some, some maybe small changes that would satisfy some of us to be able to, to vote on this. And I don't know if we can get a commitment out of the administration on that, but if not, there's no point in continuing to go through the, the rest of this booklet if there's nothing we can, we can do.
You can't, you can't vote on recommendations, but I'm sure you can, I don't see why you wouldn't be able to voice your concern about what, what would make it better in your opinion. But you can't make a motion and vote on an amendment?
Go ahead, Council.
If I could, Mr. President, yeah, to my colleague, that would be the reason with this is to be collaborative, to be able to review and make inspections. You know, sometimes suggestions make it better, not necessarily make it worse. So that's, I think that's what the city solicitor was suggesting. And, and I know that we can't amend this.
Right.
But I can also voice what I feel more comfortable with. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no more questions, we're on page 19. No questions on 19. Counsel, if you have, if you have a comment or a recommendation for them, you could approach them and tell them. And then when they come back next Monday night, it will be on there and then we approve it or don't approve it.
Okay, that's fine. I was just confused by what our clerk committees was telling me. So I apologize, but I, I understand that we can do that.
If the trustees or the board wants to say we, we need 12 or we need seven, we take what they recommend. Okay, I'm sorry. Back on page 20. There's a change on top. Any questions? No questions on 20. We'll go to 21. Council Capone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to, to our guests. Again, I'm looking at a copy I got tonight with changes from the copy that we received before. So that makes it a little difficult to kind of follow everything along. But in that section that talks about the appointment, composition, term of office for the School Finance Review Commission, on the copy I had before, it has the president of the Everett Teachers Association being pulled out. And in the copy I have in front of me, it has no mention whatsoever that it ever existed or that it's being removed. I just want to make sure that I'm looking at the right thing.
I think it's probably a typo.
That's a pretty big typo, especially when you're looking at administrative code.
What was the, what was the difference? I'm sorry.
In the copy that we received from you with the red lines, it has the president of the Everett Teachers Association being removed from the existing code. The copy that we have in our hands tonight that we were given, throughout this, this. The copy that we have in our hands tonight that we were given, throughout this document, there's been language added, and now it looks like there's language that's removed that isn't indicated that's removed. That's a concern.
The presentation told, said so, but if it's not in the writing...
Yeah, so...
Oh, so, okay. Yeah, at the top, he struck out the thirteen and made it twelve.
Right, so if you go down, one, two, three, four, five lines down, five lines down in the copy that we received prior, talks about the president of the ETA, and in the handout we have today, that has the modifications that we're supposed to be relying on, and not the old piece, has got that language removed completely.
Yeah.
So now...
It was just a typo, but you have the power. We're not trying to hide anything.
No, 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 I understand that. We're all human, and that happens.
Yes.
Yeah. No, and I remember it being in the presentation. My concern is that if this is the document, the final document we're relying on, and it's not accurate even though it's human error, that is a huge problem if you're voting on administrative code and you don't have that language in there. That's the concern.
We'll put it back in.
This would not be the finalized copy that would be put forth and printed out or distributed. I mean, the purpose of these meetings is to make these corrections.
Okay, so, the other concern is, under the charter, if we don't act on this within a certain amount of time, then it automatically passes. So now, I guess I'm going to have to ask for your legal opinion on this. If we have modifications, do we reach back in time to the date it was first presented? Or would it be the date of the modifications?
I'd have to look at the language of the charter.
Okay.
If I'm not familiar.
Okay.
I don't have it memorized, unfortunately, I'm sorry.
All right. All right, so I know it was in the presentation, so I guess the question would be, why, what's the purpose of removing the president from the Everett Teachers Association from the School Finance Commission?
I think it was because there are so many other unions, and not any other union representative was on the committee, so I think...
Okay.
That was the request.
Yeah, and it's more of an administrative recommending board, it's not, they really have no authority to make decisions.
All right.
I mean, she would certainly be invited up as well as any other union member, I'm sure, if there was a question about, you know, anything in their contract or finance or anything like that.
Okay. All right, thank you. And if, well, for that meeting that we have, that Monday night meeting, we're going to have to know what the constrictions are of us, because if we're going to get a document that night, or hopefully prior to that night, that's going to be the final document that we're going to have to vote on, up or down, we're going to need to know if, if we don't have it, I mean, I would have to vote no if I don't have it. So I don't want to do that. But we'd need to get a legal opinion on to, what's the timeframe that kicks with regards to if the city council fails to act on it, is it taken as approval?
Okay.
So, I know that we'll be able to get under the gun with the next meeting, but after that, I think we'll have a problem.
Okay.
So, all right, thank you, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
No other questions on that page.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Mr. President, on a couple of those things that Counsel Capone touched on, I was going to also ask why the ETA was striked out, but it now makes this board a twelve-member board. Where does a tie vote come into...
There's no voting. It's...
It's a recommendation board?
It's a recommending board.
Okay.
They have no say, no final say, you know.
Okay, so it's only a recommendation board. And the other thing that Counsel Capone just touched on, which is timeframe. If we had a resident tonight say that we should look at getting some more public input, which I don't think is such a bad idea, this is a huge document that changes a lot of stuff in our community, and I don't know if that's such a bad thing for the council to look at, maybe holding some community meeting or something to that effect, where, you know, these members didn't even know tonight they'd have an opportunity to speak by a vote of the council. We gave them the opportunity. What timeline, I don't, I'd like to see that answer delivered to us a lot sooner than the next meeting.
I'm going to try to look at the charter.
They're allowed to speak at public participation next meeting, and we did hold a public hearing on this.
But again, if maybe we held one on the other side of the city where somebody might not be able to get to the city hall or something to that effect, this is a very large document that has a lot of future decisions on our city.
I agree, but we've passed ordinances without public hearings because they don't require them, and they were much larger documents than I wrote very recently. So I mean, it's your choice, obviously, but that's not...
But I would like, and I know the city solicitor is looking up the rule tonight, if she could, but I'd like to see it, you know, clarified that timewise. But always, my question was on this page, was on the ETA position and why it was struck from the record where it had been proposed. Thank you.
I'll say, Counselor? We'll go to page twenty-two. There's changes on the bottom.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the new amendment on the bottom, if anyone's listening, oh, okay. It says, "Associate members may be appointed in the same manner," the same man above it says "appointed," and, I mean, it says "selected and appointed." This only says "selected." I think it should say "selected and appointed."
So...
Associate members may be selected...
Yep, in the same manner.
And appointed, in the same manner, just like it says above.
Okay. Again, I'm pretty sure that we just took that from what the state law was, but we can amend it to...
I'm sure the world won't change if you leave it.
Yeah, I don't think it's a major amendment that would affect anything.
Yeah.
Ma'am, just put the mic on.
That's okay, we heard you. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
You wrote that down right there.
I'll say, Counselor? We'll go to page twenty-three. Page twenty-three. Page twenty-four, there's no changes on twenty-four or twenty-five.
Twenty-nine to thirty-one.
I believe the next change is on page thirty-three.
Thirty-three, yeah. Go to page thirty-three, Mr. Chairman.
Thirty-three, absolutely. Page thirty-three on the bottom.
Mr. President.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
So, this is a new role that the city solicitor is going to take on that has never been...
I've been doing that for, I don't know, five to seven years, but it just was never in the admin code. I just thought it would be important to add all of the roles for that position. It's not a new role, it's, I've been doing it.
Okay, so it's just part of your daily...
Yeah, I just thought it would be important to just spell it out in the code.
Page thirty-four, there's a change at the top. That is part of thirty-three.
Chairman, a quick question.
Counsel Napolitano.
I know the risk manager position just spells it out, but there's no additional compensation. Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Unless you want to give me some.
No, not really. We'll let you know.
Page thirty-five, no changes, thirty-five?
Nothing.
Page forty, there's a change. Counsel Capone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're adding the superintendent of schools or designated to the task force. Could you just explain why?
Keith Slattery is the chairman of the Code Enforcement Task Force, and he thought it would be important to have input from the school department when they meet to discuss issues in the city. I think every other department is covered except the school department, just to be another person to collaborate.
Okay, and, I mean, that's fine, I just don't know what the input is on the task force.
Well, I mean, they may have student housing information, or things of that nature that the general task force may be unaware of.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Mr. President, on that matter, Adam, the superintendent, and him having sensitive information, that, does that jeopardize his responsibilities to his position?
There's a state law that prevents them from sharing certain information, so obviously that information wouldn't be shared. But they also have intimate knowledge about the residents, the children, and things like that. So just having that input and having them collaborate on different things, policies and things like that, that the task force wants to implement, it's good to have their input.
Okay, the next change will be on page forty-five. Counsel Capone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll lump this with the ones that are coming after it, but on this particular page, we're talking about different divisions, just renaming of things, restructuring of functions. Do we anticipate any additional personnel, or no? Okay.
The DPW director, in his experience in working at DPWs in other cities, took a look at the admin code, and it didn't make, I don't want to say it didn't make sense to him, but he knew it could be better, and so he proposed, actually, he proposed this reorganization for the DPW specifically.
Okay, so as long as there's no additional personnel built in, that's fine. Okay, thank you.
Actually, I think they eliminated one of the stormwater manager, which engineering, I think, and water sewer kind of take over anyway.
Okay, thank you.
No change on forty-six. Next change is on page forty-seven. There's no questions on forty-seven. Forty-eight and forty-nine have a lot of changes.
So, Mr. President, on this, is, under all of these responsibilities and duties of the parks, cemeteries, and sanitation, is this, I don't think it's a new position, but is it new responsibilities of this individual, or what is, what does it say currently, or what is the changes to this?
So currently, if you switch to page forty-nine, it looks like whatever is crossed out would have been his duties. And so the superintendent of parks becomes the superintendent of parks, cemetery, and sanitation, so his role encompasses all three of those, and that's what this spells out.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, page fifty, and fifty-one is a couple of changes. Counsel Capone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to kind of follow up on the question I had earlier about additional personnel, do any of these designations now require additional efforts of any existing employees? Will there be a need to reclassify? Will there be any pay increases associated with the restructuring of the duties?
Kevin would know.
Okay, all right, thank you.
No questions, we'll go to page fifty-two. Next change would be page fifty-eight out of sixty. Small change in the middle, which we talked about earlier on this, the library three And the only change is the last page, which is page sixty. Take a look at that.
Mr. President, under the Department of Organizational Assessment, where is, as you showed me before, Colleen, on the comparison of one page that was crossed out versus what was being added or explained better? What is the Department of Organizational Assessment currently say versus what the Director of Organizational Assessment appointment and duties and responsibilities are on this page sixty? Is there a comparison somewhere?
It wasn't in the admin code at all, so this is all new.
So this is all new, so does this create a new position?
No.
No, right? So where was this previous to this document?
It was, so you passed it in the budget, but it wasn't memorialized in the admin code, and now it will be.
So...
Counsel Capone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kind of similar along the line that my colleague was talking about. I know that the position was created and funded during the last budget, and now we have it formally within the code. Was it improper to have it in front of us before? Should it have been in the code first and then?
I mean, I don't think that it's any kind of fatal flaw. I think it was an oversight, but I think, you know, just memorializing it is the right thing to do.
Okay. And I think this is the last change, so the only other question I have is, I realize we can't make amendments, it's either up or down. Are we able to take pieces individually? Do we have to take the whole, call it as a whole?
I think you have to take it as a whole.
So you take it all as a whole and see the up or down?
Yeah, I don't know if you were in the room at the time when Counsel McGlaughlin asked about recommend, or maybe it was Counsel Napolitano asked about kind of making recommendations for amendments, although you can't make a motion and vote on an amendment, if you do have a concern...
Sure.
You know, I think it would be proper for you to voice the concern.
Right, and then neither the administration could incorporate it or not, or something along those lines.
Exactly.
So when the thing comes up for a vote before us, we've got to take it collectively? We can't break it down section by section?
No, the code doesn't allow it.
Okay, thank, I just wanted clarification.
I mean, the charter. And I agree with your interpretation of the charter. I think within sixty days, it has to be voted on. I think if there was a substantial enough change, I think we might be able to have a little leeway, but I don't think that there's that much of a substantial change to start from scratch again.
Sure, all right, thank you, I appreciate it.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
So then on that point, I was just going to raise my hand on that, sixty days, when is the deadline then? Do we have it?
Mr. Burley has the piece, I don't remember the date.
Mr. Burley, do you know?
But it was definitely sometime in late February, if I remember.
We'll put it to him on forty-five, please.
Yeah, I don't think we can go beyond...
It doesn't have the date on the front?
I don't see it.
So then my question to, through you, Mr. President, to the guests, is if you are going to take any of the thoughts that we shared with you this evening, you're going to present those on the Monday night, and then we're going to discuss them there, and then vote up or down?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm just wondering if you, if there'd be a possibility that you could render any decision previous to that Monday night vote, so that we could look at it, and if we have a question, as we always do, we can call you, Colleen, or Kevin, or anybody, and ask a question for clarification on something, and then we have, will be more prepared to take that final vote, up or down on the Monday night?
I mean, I think the recommendations weren't so daunting, so I think that they could probably be given to you when you get the agenda on that Thursday.
Okay, so you'll be able to issue it to us on that Thursday on the, okay. That helps, gives some Monday to work on, and make phone calls, whatever, so that would be better than having it Monday night.
It was originally proposed February twenty-fifth.
February twenty-fifth.
The next meeting would be the last day.
Okay, so if we could get that on the Thursday, that would be helpful to, at least myself, if not all of our colleagues, so that we can take a look at it over the weekend, and then come on Monday and ask our questions before the final vote. Thank you.
Counsel Semenelli.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. President for Counselman Semenelli, so, we're going to vote, we're going to vote on the next meeting, the new changes, up or down?
Yes.
Without the whole council being here this evening, and we think this is going to pass. So my question is, does it come for one meeting, and then we vote on it the next meeting?
No, the next meeting is the vote.
Under the charter, you can't accept...
The council gets a review.
This is just all discussions and stuff like that. The next meeting is when you vote. Some members that couldn't be here, it's unfortunate, but...
Okay, so my second question is, we're going to get this information on Thursday? Okay, so my second question is, we're going to get this information on Thursday?
As long as they draft it.
It's ninety-nine percent complete. There are a few recommendations to change some language, which we can incorporate and-
Okay, so we're voting on our next meeting?
Excuse us, Ms. Murray, thanks.
I just have a question from the chair. We vote up or down on this package? That's from the state law, correct?
No, it's your charter.
Just for the charter?
It's, under the charter, you vote, you can, you can only vote, you have to vote at whole, yes or no. Your charter talks about how you can't make amendments to it or alter it in any way. You have to vote as it's presented.
And we vote this down on next meeting, let's just say it gets voted down? What?
The existing agenda.
The existing code, the, the old code is still active.
Yeah, yeah. It would be helpful if the, if you stated the reasons why it was voted down, because if it would make sense to the administration, the mayor might direct us to make whatever changes concern you, and-
And hold it over and then vote again?
Well, then we could re-present it as a whole new piece.
Okay. Councilor McGuffin, before they-
Mr. President, can we, can I ask, and I can do this tomorrow, but while you're here, Colleen, can you show me the state law that talks about the change for the libraries? Where, can you send that to me in an email or some format? That'd be great. Matt can actually give it to me tonight, that'd be good, just so we can read it. Thank you.
Okay, Counselors, what is the pleasure on this piece?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion refer to the-
Councilor Hanlon?
Make a motion refer to the city council on next Monday night, favorable action.
Councilor Capone, on the motion?
Yeah, because we still have changes going on, and we just have bare bones, remember? I would just say, just refer it to the bodies. Yeah. No, no, absolutely. So, so my recommendation would be just refer it out to the body without recommendation.
Seconding, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
Motion to adjourn.
Before we adjourn, I got two announcements. We all know Councilor Hanlon's birthday is today.
No, thank you.
I know. The other announcement is, on, on April twelfth and thirteen, thirteenth, on a Beecham Street area, a gonkowin transmission line is going to be venting some gas out. So, they will be on, on site. It's safe, it's just the odor itself. It's called McAdam, which goes into the gas, because gas has no national, natural smell. So if you have any calls, you, concerns, you could definitely call the fire department, but they will be on scene, and that's what you're smelling in the Beecham Street area. Just want to let the residents know that's going on Friday the twelfth and Saturday the thirteenth. Motion to adjourn, all in favor? Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you very much to our guest.